States of America. Consider as one with the British States. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our first regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, the Village of Boston Spa, April tenth, twenty twenty-three, first one for the month of April, I should say. We are going to start with our public hearing. We will have the notice read and then I'll fill in as to what we can and can't do with respect to this based on attorney's advice earlier today. Madam Chair.
Village of Boston Spa Public Hearing Propose Twenty Twenty-Three, Twenty Twenty-Four Budget. The Village of Boston Spa Board of Trustees will hold a public hearing on Monday, April tenth, twenty twenty-three at seven oh one P M. in the lower conference room of the library located at twenty-one Milton Avenue. And he is the proposed budget is available, excuse me, for inspection by contacting the village clerk, by contacting the village clerk's office and at five hundred eighty-five by seven o'clock. Or the known website, villageofbostonspa dot com, Monday through Friday, eight thirty to four P M. and six noon holidays. So rejected tax levy increase is two point two five percent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just to alleviate confusion here, at this point, the way the process, the saving our work to say, March three first is the deadline to make changes to the tentative budget. No changes were notified before that time. That doesn't mean that it can't be amended. It just means that the tentative budget is locked in as of March thirty-first. Subsequently, you may have seen some back and forth or in the agenda attachments, some proposals, et cetera. And that will be handled in the following manner. This is from Carla, who is not to my left length. This is Alex Davis from her firm. Alex, welcome. If you need to exit quickly for any reason, we've had attorneys run and scream out of here before. There'd be exits right over there. With respect to the budget, as you're aware, the only budget that can be presented or discussed prior to the public hearing is the official tentative budget. The law provides that the tentative budget cannot be changed prior to the public hearing, and therefore, the public hearing is on the officially filed tentative budget. I know that Liz has a presentation on her proposed changes. That cannot occur until after the hearing, the public hearing is closed. In fact, the board should not make any statements regarding the tentative budgets night until after the public hearing is closed. Once the hearing is closed, the board has the right to revise the tentative budget, and that is the proper place to discuss any changes. So we can't stop you from saying what you're going to say at the public hearing portions of this program. However, there are two opportunities to be heard tonight in the public hearing and then the five-minute public comment period later on in the meeting. So it is your option on how you want to handle that. Having said all that, if you're on Zoom and you want to be heard, now's a great time to raise your hand, and we will get to you in a few moments. If there's anybody in the room that would like to speak, we have a three-minute limit specific to this topic of the tentative budget. Please raise your hand, and we will ask you to come up to the front and turn on the microphone and go ahead. Jared Igilugi, I think. And everybody, please be very, very careful on the wires up here and trying to become a little bit more fangled and whatnot. It has added a little danger to things, but when you talk into the microphone, you're turning on, you'll see the red ring go on, and then talk as close into it as you can.
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. My name's Jared Igilugi, twenty-four Chapman Street, Boston Spa, New York. I just have a few comments on the tentative budget. Specifically, first around zoning. I noticed that in the mayor's summary, you note that you expect the rezoning process to begin in October. I'm just wondering why we aren't outlaying a little bit more funding for that sooner, considering our comprehensive plan has basically wrapped up. Will be in the hands of the board shortly for approval. I don't anticipate a need for a four- to five-month RFP process, so I'm just wondering why we're not budgeting a little more aggressively to pursue rezoning, considering the need. I also just want to talk about the unclassified revenues of one hundred and twenty thousand. And thank you for the information, Mayor, that this is potentially the Woods Hollow sale or the logging revenue. But I just saw discrepancy here and want to make sure I understand what's happening. The one hundred and twenty thousand that we see in the unclassified revenue, in your note, you'd say that it will be shifted into the contingency line item, which is only one hundred and fifteen. So I'm just wondering, are we using additional funds there from a one-time unexpected purchase to try to balance year-over-year operational expenses? And instead of doing that, is there a reason why we're not using that money to get a head start on funding longer-term improvements that we've identified in our comprehensive plan as well? Specifically, funding water improvements, which we really need, or park and tree maintenance improvement? Also, on the note of water, the mayor's summary states the first water rate increase for sixty percent of village water users in five years is being proposed, a five percent increase to help fund increased costs and eighteen million dollars in water infrastructure projects. And I don't think I saw a specific line item for funding those infrastructure projects. So I want to make sure I'm understanding, are we funding just cost increases? Are we funding long-term projects there? Last note is just that I know, like many of us, I've enjoyed a number of events in the community this past year. I see that the funding for the arts is increasing back to, you know, pre-COVID levels, from what I can understand. I also see a large increase in celebration funding. And I know everyone likes a fun event. I'm just wondering if now's the time to be increasing those funds when we know that we have long-term infrastructure projects that need to be funded. So maybe just like to see us stick to more current year-over-year allotments on those line items and use any excess budget we can for those long-term spending plans. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be consistent with what we said earlier, I'm not going to respond until I have a presentation later. I think I should say appropriately to do based on attorney advice on this. So we'll let you speak, taking notes on anything that's not touched on in the presentation or something like that, and hopefully we'll answer your questions. If not, you know, we have played around anyway, so you can always come up and reissue that question if you feel like you could. Anybody else? I think I saw Donna Martin's hand go up earlier. Is that accurate?
Well, can I just say from here, it's short. Donna Martin, twenty-second Wood Court. I just wanted to show my appreciation for the small salary increases for all staff that Village employs and that the trustees and the mayor are not going to take an increase, and I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. We do ask people to come up. We'll turn off the microphone if we can't make it up for some reason. That'll become more of the crowd noise aspect, but we still would ask you to try to come up in front if you can. Who else? Anybody on Zoom? All the way up? Go ahead. We're in a counter, if you can unmute, you are good to go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to compliment you and the treasurer for this incredibly detailed document. It just astonishes me how far you have collectively brought the village from where we were. You and the accounting staff and all the rest deserve a major round of applause. I take exception to the previous gentleman's comments regarding the culture and recreation section and the increases. I think that the publicity and the positive nature of these events that I don't think anyone would disagree with that were held last year deserve every bit of our support, taxpayer dollars towards continuing them for the benefit of the citizens of our community and the children. Thank you.
Thank you. And one last call for the public hearing portion of this. As we said, there will be opportunity to have more discussion points a little bit later on in this meeting. Seeing no hands, and is that so, where is the hand that's on there that I'm seeing?
No, it's not.
Okay. Okay. Then are we going to close the public hearing? To be heard about anything else, we technically have to be, which is what we were advised. So can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Fundesa. Just a second. Trustee Baskin, discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baskin. Trustee Raymond. Trustee Fundesa. I'm trustee Cormos, Mayor of Boston.
Yes, we will close at seven ten P M. the public hearing. We would like to deference to our friends from the fire companies that are here tonight, move something up with relation to a motion for, I will actually read the motion, which is motion E. Ratifying the Mayor's Appointment of the Following Officers of the Boston Spa Fire Department. I'm going to actually ask trustee Fundesa, who's our liaison to the fire department, to take this and run with it.
Well, just to give some background, on April sixth, our fire department met and elected their officers. And we have the motion that reads, motion made by trustee and seconded to ratify the mayor's appointment of the following officers to the Boston Spa Fire Department. Chief May Big Short, First Assistant Chief Colby Crowe, Second Assistant Chief William Kenny, Third Assistant Chief Kevin Crowe, Secretary Stanley DeLong. And just to let the public know, I don't know if this is the time, but these gentlemen work so hard for our community, and I really love that they come together and really put the village first and also the areas they serve that are contracted to the towns. So I just applaud them for their efforts. Discussing fire department.
In an unusual one like this, the mayor will make the motion, would like to second. Trustee Fundesa, discussion. We also allow, because it's a spontaneous motion at this point, a ninety-second public comment period specific to the motion. Maybe would like to say anything for ninety seconds, please raise your hand, and we will hear from you. Seeing none on, let's just make sure up there too.
I lost them.
Stop, stop losing our viewers.
There, I just can't see them.
I see no hands on my end of it. I actually have it up on this.
Okay, good.
Then with no discussion. What'd you guys do? Can I get a vote of iron A, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thanks again, guys. One more time, votes are all stop, fire. Getting a motion that the minutes of the March thirteen, twenty twenty-three meeting be approved. Trustee Cormos. Trustee Fundesa, discussion.
Yes, it is very minor, but on motion H., there's comment from me that it shouldn't be fiscally responsible. I'm just scratching.
Any further changes to be made? Will the motion maker accept the change? Trustee Cormos?
Yes.
And who's my second on that one? Trustee Fundesa obviously will accept that. And so can I get a vote on the minutes as amended? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries, getting a motion abstaining, that's right. Well, on the thirteenth?
No.
You were here on thirteen, twenty-seven, you'd be abstaining, I think, right?
Yeah.
Got to get a motion that the minutes of the March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three meeting be approved. Trustee Baskin. Trustee Cormos, discussion. All in favor? Not all, once, all opposed? Motion carries or will sue, based on the free voices that are. Mayor announcements, we've got a lot to do tonight, and there's nothing really to update on. I will say there will be, I believe, a motion about Woods Hollow later on that will start pushing the information out to both Milton and to the public. So stay tuned for that coming up in other business later on tonight. It is consistent with what we had discussed at the last meeting, no real changes to announce there, just some words got patched up the way that the two entities seem to be satisfied with. But again, we will look forward and publicize it coming up if that motion does carry later on in another business. Also, there's going to be another business. Chief Dave Bush is, I hope his wife knows, she's sitting in the audience tonight. He is willing to stay out for another year as our police chief, and I really appreciate that fact. And he has promised to work with me on a succession plan from here. For those that know Dave, it's a very important thing to have a consistency in that police department that he brings. And while I can make him smile every once in a while, he still scares the bejesus out of me. So he does his job very well, obviously. So thank you to Dave, and hopefully we'll have that vote later on as well in other business. Liaison reports, we'll start with trustee Cormos.
I don't have any reports on the library, but this last week, myself and trustee Raymond met with Ross Farrell and Megan Quick from CDT A. And along with a, we met with the C H A. That's the consultant they picked to do the initial study. It was just, they wanted to walk around town, look at the bus stops. You know, we discussed potential other, other bus stops. It was a very informative meeting. And trustee Raymond, you want to fill in a little more on that?
Yeah, basically, what they did is they went through the existing bus stop locations. The one down at Mol-Tav, which is probably the most popular one, and trying to figure out some preliminary concepts that would allow for the potential fallout to make it easier for buses to, you know, for people to board the bus without, I mean, very clearly, they cannot block the intersection or prevent individuals from being able to get around people who are cute to turn left, because that is a very big issue at that intersection. So they were made aware of that. There's also consideration of consolidating the location of bus stops of East and West High Street. And then they also probably do a preliminary concept of perhaps wanted Double Day Woods as well. Those are kind of evenly spaced out. And it would provide, you know, maximum convenience to a lot of the riders within the corridor. So I don't, they didn't give us necessarily a timeline as when we'd see those, but I encourage them to also coordinate with New York State DOT as the signals on Front Street at Washington are going to be placed probably this year. So if those haven't coordinated with the O T. So, but that's, that's a quick summary of what we talked about.
They also mentioned that they'll be doing, you know, first the assessment for the engineer, but then there will be public input, and we'll work with them to, you know, publicize that. So, you know, they're not going to go ahead and do anything without getting public.
Quick question, are they going to make sure that the CDT A Star Program remains intact, which is basically a personal pickup with the smaller buses at the Double Day Woods entrance?
I believe, we didn't specifically discuss that, but they did mention using that service for the Department of Social Services, because they, you know, used to have a bus run down to Social Services, and there is no sidewalk all the way down from fifty to there. So they did mention that they're looking at using that service, particularly for these side routes. So I don't know specifically the Double Day.
They currently have that CDT A Star, for those that don't know, is it follows the existing route, but goes essentially off the side roads for needs of certain passengers. The elderly are basically one general category of that, and those have my assistance generally. So it's kind of a door-to-door service or a better approach at one. And so that's why it's favored by Double Day Woods residents over there. I know for a fact from talking with them. But anything else on your report?
No.
Trustee Fundesa.
We'll have a lot to look for tonight, but just to give the public an update, the Arts Committee, Kathy Hacker, she's been working with our treasurer to give her work to Central Arts for getting that grant for the, it is a program that would add chamber music to bookside music. So I think that's a really nice addition to our community. So you're moving along with that, that's what I got.
Trustee Baskin.
Thank you, trustee Fundesa, for the Arts Committee update. I missed the last meeting. They did say they're working on publicity and rating on their budget to see what else they. Yeah, the team group is going to be awesome. The Parks and Tree Board wanted me to share that on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, they'll be celebrating Arbor Day with a tree planting in Kelly Park. And they encourage people to participate, join them down there where they have the trees. Also, they are looking for members, and they encourage anyone who's interested to apply online.
Trustee Raymond.
So I'm sure a lot of people realize that D P W's been really busy on Front Street. A lot of concrete work in preparation for eventual milling and repaving. They, that's been taking a hard part of their day, and obviously doing leave pickup and rough pickup. I would also say that, you know, I don't know the exact date when they will stop doing that. I believe it's sometime in May. But at that point, you would need to bundle and bag any leaves or trimmings or anything like that. Just as a side note, I don't say, you know, folks who don't have county waste and have a bridge, apparently they're also picking up now, so that helps the village out a lot. Other things. Jeff recently got some quotes. We were supposed to do the well reading conditioning this year, and he got two quotes so far. They are in the forty thousandies, and I believe we only budgeted twenty-five thousand. So we may have to take another look at that, and given the fact we probably can't get it from this budget here, may have to allocate funds for doing that in the next budget. That's about all I have.
Well, realistically, what we can do is see if it rolls back into fund balance, if we utilize it from fund balance at that point in time. So if we're not sure about it, that's probably the best way to handle it, because we know that the twenty-five thousand isn't being utilized, at least for this year. So it's one way to consider doing that, and thank you for sharing that as well. Got to do that in my report earlier. Trustee reports on file, I would ask the trustees to take special note of O P A recommendations from the treasurer and to be prepared to vote on that the next meeting or to ask for information between now and that next meeting. I will report that Barbara will be leaving us. She got an offer she could not refuse, we'll call it, from a private company, and so she'll be leaving us in early May. Melissa McCann, our deputy treasurer, is going to be starting this week, around seventeen and a half hours a week on average for her, and we are in the process of locating a new treasurer as well. The trustees were shared in E F P R, our account's memo, today about concerns about the future and possibly changing us to an hourly fee structure. We are still going to discuss that with them and see what the best pathway forward is once we also learn who our next treasurer is going to be. So he was to say Barbara will be missed. She actually was willing to say, but it was one of those situations where the job she had already applied for came up, and she said, look, gotta go. And she's still very willing to help train whoever, even if she's left at that point in time, because her belief is that she was not given that opportunity when she came in, and she does not want to leave somebody else in that type of lurch ultimately. So thank you to Barbara for having that recognition and awareness and for promising to help us down the line. So thank you to Barbara. Hopefully, she's there watching while you're, our appreciation for her as well. Let's go to presentation time. Trustee Cormos, you're up.
Do you want me to go up to the podium, or should I do?
Up to you. I'm going podium work, but I mean, it's up to you where you're comfortable. Start slideshow.
Yeah.
Top middle, top middle.
Just want to be able to see the slideshow, see what slide we're on. Two slides together, it's not a lot of text, et cetera. But after reviewing the tentative budget, I and I believe some others, trustee, share some of the concerns with the budget. One is the level of revenues compared to the level of expenditures, the prioritization of one-time events versus essential infrastructure spending. And one thing that's not in the budget but is there is we have a very large unrestricted fund balance. And that's something that I believe we should need to start dealing with, and that includes the budget. We have basically expenditures predicted to increase about fourteen point four percent from fiscal year twenty-three, and revenues only increasing about ten percent. So that leaves you a gap about four percent, which doesn't match up too well to a two point two five increase in taxes. So one of the things that I found particularly disturbing is the use of one-time revenue, the hundred and twenty thousand that's in, in the budget that is going to come from, at that point, logging, but now is going to be potentially three times higher, because it looks like we're going to do a sale. And generally, you, you know, don't take a one-time receipt of funds that large, particularly from a sale, and use it to balance your budget, because that's just not good financial plan. There's a quote from the Comptroller's Office that I'd like to show to board members. And it says, these one-time revenues, these one-time revenues, particularly larger amounts generated in the sale of real property, should not be used to finance day-to-day operations. And they, instead, they should be restricted to one-time expenditures, such as capital acquisitions or contributions to debt reduction. So that was, you know, jumped out at me. I think go to the next slide. Just went through those. Next slide. So there's the difference, the, you know, four percent difference, and you wonder, you know, was it made, was it fixed with some of these funds? Next, next slide. This is the operating deficits. This is a measure that is used to sort of measure the health of an organization. So if it is, you know, a high percentage, it means that you've got a fair amount of difference between your revenues and your expenses over the size of your expenses. And as you can see, in twenty twenty, you know, we had very high number, but it's been decreasing ever since. And that's troubling, because you really have to watch things. In other words, expenses are starting to outpace revenues. Next slide. Okay. Our water revenue. We combine our water revenue and expenses into our general fund. We don't use a separate water fund. We actually have a separate water fund, it's called Fund F. The thing is, if you look at that slide, a lot of our revenue or excess revenue is coming from water. In other words, we haven't been spending large amounts of money on fixing our water infrastructure, and we've been taking those profits and basically throwing them into the batch. And we've been taking those profits and basically throwing them into the batch and using them. So this is, you know, troubling. There is a proposed five percent increase. Which is going to bump that up, but that's probably not going to be enough. So I have some proposals to look at a different structure. Which I hope, you know, later on, there's a motion to re reestablish the revenue committee, work with that committee. And and come up with a plan that will generate even more revenue because as you heard earlier, we have eighteen nineteen million dollars worth of water and sewer. Infrastructure that we need to buy or finance in the next five years. And then it's followed by another. You know, thirty or so million and I think the total is what ninety million, sixty billion altogether over fifty years.
Fifty five.
Fifty five million over fifteen years. That's a lot of money. So, um. So what I did not see in this this budget is anything about starting to either put aside money for that need. Or start to spend it. I mean, we just signed. Remind me.
Change of scope for the RFP for the John Street Tower?
Yeah, we we just, you know, authorized the the design of the John Street Tower. So I expect sometime in twenty twenty four that we will be, you know, starting that project and starting the process of having that money to do it. Also, the plan from from our discussions is to go ahead and buy or finance the Geiser Road well generator. And that's about a hundred and twenty three thousand. So I didn't see that in the budget. So, you know, the budget covered every year type of stuff, but it didn't include some of these major capital items. And I think the budget should show it because we're gonna implement those projects. On the, you know, dollars, the hundred and twenty, what I would like to see and proposing is that. These one time dollars from the sale of Woods Hollow, which is a park. Be put into reserve for park and tree and trail capital improvements for for improvements at last, not the operating multi grass type of thing. But I think that would be would be a suitable use for that money because it was money that we were not counting on getting. And also within that park system is the need for about three hundred thousand to insert this pool. And where's that going to come from? So I think the the money should be directed, not just directly to the budget. Um, let's see. Okay. So, you know, we need to have in the budget, some of these these projects that we should be getting going on. Um, our fund balance, the next slide. Here's our fund balance. Now, you can see on the top graph that you you look at fund balance as a percent of your expenditures in your budget. That ours is getting pretty high and, you know, the generally recommended level is about twenty twenty five percent. Actually, we should probably have a policy. I mean, many municipalities have a policy that says we're not going to let our fund balance get above a certain level. So what do you, you know, it's not excess money. We need that money. What we should be doing is creating reserve funds. And there's mechanisms, legal mechanisms to create reserve funds for repairs, capital reserve funds. In fact, we just created reserve funds for fire department. And we should be doing that for our water and sewer infrastructure. We should be doing it, you know, in the case with Woods Hollow money with our park and tree. Of funds and then potentially a fund also for building. We could do a repair reserve fund. And that would lower our our fund balance and secure that money in restricted funds. Also, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I think we should be using our our water fund. Now, we can't afford today to take all the revenue that we got in the past from water. Move it over and have to raise taxes, but we can start taking the increases soon. So the thirty thousand dollars I took from this year's increase. And put into into fund F. And the other thing I did is I took, I think, I believe about two hundred thousand for fund balance to bring that down and moved it over to to fund F. Okay, the hot button. Celebrations. Um, some increased almost more, almost double from last year. And then the amount allocated for celebration and arts is is more than the amount we allocate for all four parks. And, you know, that seems a little little excessive. So here's here's the history. Back in two thousand sixteen, you know, it was about thirty thousand celebrations. And then it went way down when we found out we didn't have any money. And then we added some for arts and the. Tended budget has a huge increase and, you know, my revised budget, you know, still increases it. But not by the levels that are that are shown in in this budget. And, you know, in contrast, not for profit, community groups are getting about a five percent increase. When you compare that to a hundred eighty one percent. That's, you know, a little dramatic. Other costs, as you saw, the the operating deficit of going down. Salary benefits increased almost four percent. And, you know, benefits when you work for the municipality are about forty percent. Of the rep of your salary, unlike if you work for a private company, you know, you might get benefits worth about forty percent. Um, total personal personnel cost is three million or forty nine percent of our budget, so half of our budgets due to people. Um, utility and gasoline are costing more. Our essential services, fire, DPW have all had significant cost increases. Um, that's culture. There's a park, there's the pool, which has that three hundred thousand dollars that's needed and the air costs have gone up because we're paying the people more. On next slide. Government services, the gray there is where I put took two hundred and fifty out of fund balance and put it. Showing that we do need about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of essential repairs. These are repairs that were reported two years ago and said we should do within six months. We need to do them. We need to fix that pole and fix that retaining wall. There are blocks of stone sitting on Jen's desk from that wall. It's time to fix that wall. Um, safety inspections going up, you know, we we need, you know, more resources there. Next slide. Um, DPW, you know, that's the main, you know, essential services is from DPW. Fire department has been increased. I think I have the slide on fire department here. No, these are the personnel costs.
Oh, safety's next.
Um, there's the police department and fire department. Luckily, the fire department has the funds from their their. Outside revenue to meet their needs. So we're not worried about them there. DPW expenses are expected to increase eleven point six percent to two point five million. So. Um, you know, unfortunately, the tentative budget reminds me a little bit about the early days when I first moved here. You know, a lot of funds for celebrations and not much attention paid to infrastructure. You know, we. You know, don't want to go there again. We made significant progress in the last four years and we need to stay focused on essential services and infrastructure. So in the budget amendments, which I have with me, and they may not be exact accounting numbers. Because I'm not an account, municipal accountant, and and those can be looked at. And I don't think we're going to be monthly voting tonight on this so we can make sure we can fine tune it. But I started using the water fund by putting two hundred and eighty three in Fund F. And to the one of the hundred and twenty three, five hundred for the generator and start putting money in to fund for the. Do you have? No, that one more. Yeah, leave it there. Um, you know, increase in water profits added to the fund death. And then if I can come up. You know, with revenue committee with more revenue, we put that in fund F. Um, we transfer two hundred and fifty from fund balance. They they were taken down to, that's, that's what I figured. They wanted an increase of over three hundred and sixty two percent. So in budgeting, you know, I mean, I love the events, you know, the volume of the egg hunt, but, you know, they're great events. But, you know, to increase the spending there, three hundred and sixty two percent just doesn't make sense, you know, a hundred and thirty percent, I think they use this fine. You know, no other department increased that that much. Um, I didn't make any changes to DPW. We went through those in the workshop, the sewer fund, the library, minor changes in home and community. The revenue line, there was a few places, you know, looked like we could get a little more revenue. Um, you know, I've mentioned the other changes. Uh, you know, and next slide. The result is the same as in the tentative budget. In other words, my changes did not change the tax base. So the bottom line is you got one budget that's using one time revenues. You've got another budget that's. Starting to move money around and address our infrastructure needs and, you know, bring up fund balance down. So, you know, you choose which one you want.
I just want to thank trustee Kormos for, that was a lot of work that it must have taken to go through all that and then basically try to learn accounting one on one on crash course. I appreciate our efforts. And I would simply say, my point of view on the budget is more aligned with that than the tentative budget.
How do you know? You haven't done a percentage yet. Second to get this loaded up, start. Couple of notes. So first off, the amendments you saw possibly on the agenda materials are not the amendments that are current. Trustee Kormos, she sent in some at around four oh five today. So we do not have them. We did not receive the time to get them asked to use for meeting. So. Seeing that we're not going to be apparently voting on tonight, you'll have the opportunity to see them at some point, but just as FYI there. No, there is no need for a public hearing at that point, but there will be obviously a normal meetings worth of public comment available in that situation. Public hearing is only required on tentative budget itself and then anything else from there is just an overall public session allowed.
You mentioned the amendments that Liz has proposed online about equity. So.
Correct.
Earlier there was a listing. So that listing is not appropriate to consider?
That is now meant to be planted by a revised schedule A or something like that?
Yeah, I have it here. Put it on the website. It's similar, but it's filled in a little differently. Details. It has some of those transfers from one fund to another. I also have a copy of, just like the copy of the tentative budget that shows the amounts from the tentative budget and then what I'm proposing. So that's probably the most useful thing to look at. I have some copies here, people.
Okay. Small screen, I know, but we'll work with it the best we can. No, won't unfortunately. So. No, but what we will do is I'll provide it for later on. Yeah.
You can't see it from here.
Okay, well, here we go. After seeing trustee Kormos's budget questions over the past three weeks and her eventual proposed budget amendments, it became clear to me that he had set the record straight about fact versus fiction concerning our economic condition, past, present, and future. And how it impacts budgeting for the village. It may seem strange that the guy who's been in this position for only a year is walking you through these issues instead of the people who represent the village for four years or six years. That's why I'm at the podium instead of at the table right now. It's clearly we need to give some education to everybody in Rome. First, let's discuss one of Liz's favorite topics, fund balance. As stated in my executive summary to the tentative budget. Daryl Fund's fund balance objective reached four point five million by the end of fiscal year. Although when accounting changes fix the legacy issue with H funds, negative fund balance, that's a capital legacy fund. It was minus three hundred thousand dollars in the October A U D. Our real fund balance is going to be four point two million dollars when we clear out that inconsistency. That money is already in our fund balance from ARCA money, et cetera. So that's why. That money is already in our fund balance from ARCA money, et cetera. So that's why it needs to clear out. So really, we have four point two million dollars based on what we know going on. Understand also that we're spending eight hundred thousand dollars on DPW equipment currently out of our funds. But that too is H negative. In this case, so capital negative will be replaced by a loan in a year once our dump trucks come in. So we have a one point one million dollar loan coming in for DPW equipment and a hundred thousand dollar grant, give or take, that's coming in. So we are going to be more or less at four point two million dollars with additional debt at that point in time. The reason we raised to do that was we got the two and a half percent interest rate on that equipment. So it was the time to, if we're going to get those pieces of equipment eventually beat the interest rate increases, which we did, we predicted that, we were right. So a lot of people tried to take credit for the fund balance growth, but I want to show some of the biggest contributors to the growth. First, let's look at property taxes. And when we do this, we're going to look at this in a, an idea of property tax cap would limit you normally to two percent. Inflation would normally be three percent per year. So we'll assume that from twenty eighteen, fiscal year twenty eighteen, we went up that amount each time and then see what really happened. What was the real revenue from that year? In fiscal year twenty nineteen, then Mayor Romano was crucified for the over seventeen percent tax increase that occurred. Yet that increase was over fifteen percent above the tax cap. And alone, that increase has led to one point one million dollars in additional revenue over the tax cap effect over five years. Overall, property taxes tax just shy of one point six million dollars of what they would have been with just two percent average annual increases per year. That's where we have to say thank you residents and taxpayers because you have provided that to us. That's created a large portion of our fund balance that we're sitting on right now. We didn't hear that earlier, but thank you. Sales tax revenues have similarly picked up over, you know, above three percent inflation per year, while the projection in the tentative budget suggested one point three million dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty-three sales tax revenue for the village. The pace of receipts is raising prospects to a number closer to one point three five million dollars. Sales tax receipts in excess of inflation over the last five years have added over three hundred thousand dollars in bonus revenue for the pie. Similarly, mortgage tax revenues have exceeded inflation by over one hundred thousand dollars over the last five years. And ARCA funds, which are the code funds, added hundred and three six thousand dollars of the unanticipated revenues the village's coffers. Finally, very relevant is the proposed budget amendments. We need to look at the fire department revenues. Mayor Romano worked hard with Milton to renegotiate Milton's share of fire fees after Milton's share was lagging behind Boston's for some time. Then Mayor Wolbre negotiated with Boston during his tenure. Results of these negotiations have had huge positive effects on our overall fund balance because the village no longer has to fill in the huge gap for fire services. Specifically, the increased revenue has taken over one million dollars off the village's expense plate. Thank you, firefighters. These items, ones we just talked about, total about three million, five hundred fifty-one thousand dollars in revenues in excess of inflation and tax caps. Remember, our fund balance is four point two million at the end of the year, most likely. Want to go back to the fire department now because it's a major issue in the budget amendments proposed by trustee Cormos. I've told the trustees multiple times in the past year that both the town of Boston and the town of Milton have suggested potentially retracting funding for fire services if the village uses town money for facilities maintenance and/or the village doesn't show some level of skin in the game fiscally. The budget is sixty-one thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars for this year's building improvements at Eagle Matley and Union Firehouses. That's separated by four thousand three M L and fifty-seven five for the apron sidewalk. These would represent eighteen cents per thousand dollars of assessed value for village taxpayers to cover these needed improvements. Compare this to the about one dollar per thousand of assessed value. The residents of Milton and Boston outside the village are paying for ESFD fire services. The slashing proposed by trustee Cormos of building improvement would lower the village's responsibilities to the firehouses to just over a penny per thousand dollars of assessed value. The long-term implications to the funding of our departments by the towns would be potentially disastrous if this is what we provide. And we are annually audited by Boston already concerning these types of issues. This isn't a game. This is very real, as the fire chiefs can tell us. With respect to major capital expense for the village offices building, we've been warned by our accountant staff before we begin depleting our fund balance further, we need to perform long-range capital project planning. Specifically, we're stated by Bob Fox at our accountant's EFPR. We understand that the village has a strong fund balance, but it also has potential major expenditure requirements to update its water and sewer systems. Once again, we recommend the development of a long-range plan to determine the adequacy of fund balances for the upgrades. Nobody's saying we shouldn't perform the work at village offices. The issue is how we pay for major capital items, knowing that our fund balance is needed to help ensure annual debt payments for many projects we're facing. Here's a look at just some of the likely capital expenditures we're facing over the next five years. Bob Fox stated to me, a list like this isn't a capital plan, despite trustees touting a list akin to this one that they view as such a plan. Bob stated flat out that a capital plan includes an actual budget for the items and a pathway to financing for or payment for each method of payment. He worries about the same thing I do, depleting the fund balance, which was standing at between four and five million dollars over the next year. Would hurt our access to a safety net for annual debt payments that if we subtract the fire trucks, and it's a twenty-four million dollars, we do that, plus library to the degree we have to help out there. Those debt payments could still reach eight hundred thousand to a million dollars per year if no grants can be secured. And if loan terms are between twenty and thirty years for some of the items. Remember again, that the one point one million dollars in DPW equipment was purchased in order to be interest rate increases. So that was more or less done out of necessity. But we're already discussing with the Burge how to pay for the one point two million dollars in renovations for John Street Water Tower. Where things will get dicey here. So you're with me and see what we can do this. Speaking of that tower, we recently received a reminder of what lacking a capital plan and awareness of our needed projects can do. Here's a clip concerning the John Street Tower from earlier this year.
The twenty twenty-two report that wasn't done by Roger Furr indicated the needed fully removed and relocated that extra. That's a significant expense difference with the work of two storeful work. And the general cost of that is gone now. Uh, Roger actually working on a better plot for full relocation this year today. But in July, when we had your past report, your twenty sixteen report, we sent it off to a couple of tenant contractors to give some money to get the cost for. And the cost range from three hundred and twenty thousand, for want to show them in the part sixteen report, to eight hundred thousand, which the contractor indicated may be needed for a full renovation because so much time has elapsed. So that delta of three twenty to eight hundred is really the expense that's incurred because things weren't taken care of and handling there. And also with the highway, although in twenty sixteen, the interior inspection, they did the whole renovation, third, right, from moving place in that foggy, potentially in your prior inspection, they could have noticed these failures earlier and corrected that. Whether they are caused by the ice, which some of the inspection reports indicated was possible, or the attachments by the division contractors or just the deferred maintenance. All of those deferred maintenance choices cause costs to increase the longer they go on defer. They continue to defer, the more costly it is to the point where you are now. So that's the importance of maintenance that I believe where you are right now really highlights the fact that, yes, you've got to correct it. But you also have to figure out how you're not going to be in this situation again in ten or thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years.
The tower is now listed as costing an estimated one million sixty thousand dollars for revitalized, plus a hundred twenty thousand dollars to move some of their equipment causing advanced degradation of the tower. The seven hundred forty thousand dollars extra cost of the tower work itself is a mistake that cannot be made again by this board. Much the same way as the Bill Johnson's issue, we cannot just assume we'll pay cash out of fund balance all at once for the one point two million dollars in power expenses, not to mention the half million dollars of revitalization cost for our two blast line towers that could also become million dollar issues if we don't act soon. But then this comes with the backdrop of moving four hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars of village money to a reserve fund for capital expenditures for parks, trees, trails, and repairs that also turned into a pool today out of nowhere. Three hundred sixty thousand dollars of this money would be from the sale of Woods Hollow. I guess I should skip past the idea of the irony that the person that thought we should have maintained ownership of Woods Hollow to the financial management of the village is suddenly trying to squirrel away the money from the sale. This move has all kinds of implications I need to explain. First, a hundred twenty thousand dollars of Woods Hollow money was budgeted as expected revenue as a minimum for the potential logging revenue that we did not sell Woods Hollow. A hundred twenty thousand dollars was distributed, Jared, as five thousand dollars toward the six thousand dollars of Kelly Park equipment enhancements and one hundred fifteen thousand dollars for contingency. Even if the amount received related to Woods Hollow is three hundred sixty thousand, that would mean our fiscal year twenty twenty-four contingency would be three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. And most, if not all of that would roll into fund balance after the completion of the fiscal year. Because you see, what Barbara and I did during your department meetings, as you know, is we went through line by line and saw where we had shortfalls because of inflation and other issues in every darn line. As of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, we corrected those issues because we are sick of dipping into contingency this early into a budget year. Yes, it's not a perfect process and maybe there's going to be contingency dip into next year. But at the end of the day, we work on improving our efficiency with respect to making sure we're not dipping into contingency. The idea is not to waste the Woods Hollow money and there's an extra carrot to avoid it. Villages are allowed to budget up to ten percent of toll appropriations to their contingency lines. We're able to do this to help protect the money for the time being with no other implications for our budget. Should some of the Woods Hollow money eventually be used for existing village parks? Of course. My notion was once we have a cost related to Wishwall Park enhancements, once our master plan is vetted by the community and approved by the community, which Liz proposed under budgeting to remove this community buy-in, we would use fifty thousand to a hundred thousand dollars of that money toward the park improvements. What hasn't been explained is why we would place eleven percent of our fund balance into a lockbox fund when again, we need a safety net for infrastructure. Going back to our accountant's advice, Bob Fox stated regarding the park and tree non-existent account, the board needs to be clear on whether this is a reserve or a fund. There's no such thing as a reserve fund. Reserves have specific requirements in creating a fund that only creates more administrative time and often counting confusion, especially if personnel are changing. We recommend you just increase the budget if you intend to use the money in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. We also recommend that a long-range plan be prepared for the parks and trees to determine how any funds would be spent. Refund annual maintenance for our revenues every year for our parks and trees, and maintenance is not a capital expense. Without some level of specific rationale, the projects for us, aside from the Wiswall Park enhancements, there's no reason to permanently lock away four hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars into this proposed account. Furthermore, the motion related to this account, which won't be heard later time apparently, is not proper in form and lacks required information. If the account doesn't exist, then the proposed transfer cannot be budgeted. Liz's thirty thousand dollars to F fund proposal suffers from the same issues. According to Bob, he states, the proposed transfer to the water fund for thirty thousand dollars cannot be made. The water fund is inactive. There have been several reviews that show moving the water activities to a separate fund would have an adverse impact on the general fund. An alternative would be to set up a water reserve, but that should be done only after you're sure of what the funds would be used for. We recommend that it be done in the context of creating a long-range plan. F fund, even if it existed, isn't a capital projects fund for water. And again, a transfer to F fund is improper in the budget based on Bob's knowledge of our current accounting setup. So of course, this gets trustee Cormos ready to say, well, yes, we can't afford birdhouses or family fun day or funding to seniors or money for our firehouses. No, Liz, that's not the reality. Spentitures for culture and community represent two point two percent of A fund and two point zero percent of our overall budget. We live in a village. As hollow as you may feel this sounds, it truly is a village of friends. And we are a very fortunate community in terms of what we have in terms of volunteers and resources. You tell us over and over again how we're a low-income community, but try to gain mileage from that fact. Yet you're proposing under-budgeting events in the funding that is encouraging community for those lower-income families and seniors, knowing that they don't have the means to enjoy aspects of our community like the fair. Furthermore, you don't want to invest more in the BSPPA despite the business renaissance we're experiencing. Why?
The name is done over the past year, too, is where we developed a good relationship with with the media, with the television stations and the radio. We had the CTR brought up on the call this Saturday. We had.
Second one.
Second one came up and did a thing on top of that. So we were getting a lot more media exposure with the correct, I mean, I think you kind of like speed down that, right?
No, I think you. Just, it doesn't generate what we need to.
No, I don't know that. And I think it would be hard for us to really typically, you know, share.
But we don't get a direct benefit. We get let someone, I think, sales tax growth. We get a lot. I'm enjoying life and just encouraging people to come here and.
Ben points to you.
What? I didn't even hear what that.
You you brought up for BSPPA, it's quality of life at the end of the day at a minimal is because it doesn't put a direct dollar in a cost for a village via the B P A. The businesses in our community contribute greatly and it is to our advantage to make sure they continue to grow.
They're very organized.
Well, in case folks think it wasn't something that Liz meant, two nights later.
It's a lot of. So it's a community engagement with thousands of people. People come here and see birdhouses. They walk through the streets to look at the birdhouses, the banners, you know.
It's almost more with an organization that mission is to promote business. Our mission is not is not to promote, as our number one mission is not to promote business. Our mission is to provide service and loading to our.
But then you offered to rip six thousand dollars of funding for Kelly Park enhancements being proposed by Ray Otten. Give those funds to the birdhouse program at this exchange.
About the store owners.
But we have six thousand dollars on Hunter Kelly Park. Are you willing to give that?
Yes. I don't give a G.
We have to make choice.
Because I raised twenty thousand dollars less than six months last year for the park that I didn't charge this bill a damn penny for. So don't challenge me because I'm.
Yes, you know something?
We do.
For those that don't know, Ray Otten resigned from all of his positions at our last meeting after that exchange especially. Yeah, it looks like you're trying to take the six thousand dollars away from everyone in that context. What's sad is that Liz has been trying to attack events like Family Fun Day for many months to the point that when I seated, the attendance was twenty-five hundred people at this very meeting in late August, early September. She states in an email, the first comment is to credit Mayor Rossi with the estimate of attendees. I was not there, but the photographs or reports from volunteers do not indicate that large of an audience or attendance. And yes, she said it again at workshops.
You know, looking at the pictures and the children, I thought, what?
Oh, no. Pictures.
Pictures.
Well. Okay. The thing is, the, what is? The thing is, the purpose, what is the point of purpose of being?
Gaming fun, you know?
No.
Yes.
It's very hard to follow, I have to say.
I agree.
I'm here to help after...
Take her outside. Beat her up.
Did we object to that comment? You know, last meeting?
No, he said it.
Who said it?
He said it.
I just find that ironic.
Now it's okay?
No, it's not okay.
Yes.
It's not okay.
It seems inappropriate. I'm just saying.
As soon as he realized that you said it, he was gonna say it.
Because if I mentioned really, I agree.
Okay, folks, folks, folks.
Ben, come on.
Yeah, it was inappropriate. Absolutely. He was being sarcastic, obviously, but it was inappropriate.
Guys, let's move on.
Not sarcastic.
Let's move on.
If I said it, I'd be on my ass outside.
Let's move on, everyone, please.
A lot of strange things were said at the workshop concerning group events and groups, including one trustee suggesting the seniors didn't need the increased funding proposed on the tentative budget. A group that is probably being most affected by current inflation issues. I don't know if this is an attempt to undermine events and group funding. If it's related to trustee Baskin's not deleted post on Facebook after I won the mayor position suggesting that I could never get anything done during my tenure as mayor, but these proposed changes mean more of politics than reality of our financial...
I never said that.
No, you wrote it. I'm gonna say it.
And it's not a sudden concern about finances driving these proposed flashes through proposed amounts. Until this situation rectifies itself, none of us deserve raises. None of us. You insist on trustee raises, I'll reduce my pay again to cover the raises because our taxpayers shouldn't have to foot that bill for this toxicity.
Who's toxic there? You are toxic, Frank. You. You've turned this into a tox... You single-handedly turned this into a toxic event. You could have been talking about the budget. You're turning it into an attack at opportunity, as you always do, against the other trustees. You don't have to go there, but you always do.
You done?
Until I feel compelled to talk again?
Yes. Larry won't read it quick because of you.
That's false. Frank, I was really hoping you would have policy.
So in summary, here's what we know about our village's finances and budgeting, Sean. One, we're in good overall shape with a healthy fund balance, especially from reviews in certain categories exceeding inflation and tax cap by a large margin since 2018. Two, we completely lack a real long-range financial plan with over $24 million to imminent capital expenditures and just $4 million in fund balance to cover them. Three, setting aside 2% of our overall budget for culture and community is not the issue with our budget. In a village like ours, we have a certain obligation to fund these lines properly for growth, vitality, and community support. Four, even after tonight, we will not have an F Fund for water and an account dedicated to parks and trees. Our accountants recommend we review our intentions and plans for both over a longer range before making false moves. Bob shared a story where one village A E represents put $5 million away in a water reserve fund and decided then to go for county water. It cost that village $100,000 to figure out how to get the money out of the fund because it's locked away in that fund. And then they had to go and give the town refunds because the town no longer had an association with the village once they stopped the water. These are the dangers you can get into with a misapplied fund. Five, trustee Cormels's proposed, well, it was 273 of new expenditures, it didn't bounce, but overall, here's what I'll tell you. Her amendments that we saw today, you're doing some quick math on them, will take, give or take about $610,000 out of fund balance and place it into funds that may or may not be related to our future needs because again, we don't have a long-range plan. There isn't disagreement on capital projects or protecting our parks and trees despite what Liz might be suggesting in her proposed amendments. It's more a situation of understanding, like she shoved down the throat of Mayor Romano years ago, that long-range planning requires fiscal knowledge and planning. And when our accountants tell us we're doing things completely wrong, that's the essence of fiscal irresponsibility. The shoe's on the other foot now. I hope she'll finally practice what she preached years ago as the John Street Tower remains in perilous condition and study after study has led to no actual action plan in four years. Stop punishing our community for this fact and work to finally get us on the right track moving forward. Thank you.
I have one quick question. Frank, do you recall what occurred with the accounts under the Romano administration? Do you recall that they left in distress because of their financial malfeasance? And perhaps that's why Liz said the accounts weren't doing what they were supposed to do? And when she meant the accounts, she meant the controller's office, actually. I assume you remember that there were several years that were years that weren't closed. And the actual fund balance didn't spring until under former mayor Olbray and that was consolidation.
And I just showed you about $3.5 million to the 4.23.
And also a restructuring of water funds. So you left a lot of hard data out in the presentation.
Also, I'd like to comment that when we put aside, let's say, 250, that does not preclude that we don't finance that.
Actually does, because where you're putting it in an F Fund is an operating account. Therefore, F Fund has to be balanced with actual appropriations.
For village improvements, that's not F Fund.
F Fund is for water operations. If you're talking about the improvements and you're putting 250 aside, as Bob said tonight, I gotta call them out.
No, that is not put aside. That is put on the budget line. You should have looked at it a little closer.
Right, and so you're saying we may...
If we don't, if we decide to finance it, we can finance it and put the balance back in.
And in the meantime, you're gondling up $250,000 of revenue in expenses.
I'd like to ask you a question. Why does every other village that has water have an F Fund and we're the only ones that do not? I checked through the A and Bs. Every other village has F, that uses F Fund. And I also talked to the controller's office. They said if they came in today, they would cite us for too large unrestricted fund balance. They said...
That's interesting since USDA was concerned, but when you show USDA that we actually have debt and that the net of debt fund balance is not nearly that large and we are using it as a safety net, it's explained away. In fact, every accountant we talked to is fine with it based on the reality of what our situation is, Liz. You've been through this up, down, left and right. Make sure we're not doing those things.
The solution is to create reserve funds and...
There is no such thing as a reserve fund. It's either a reserve or a fund.
Or a reserve, okay. I don't have the language down. Reserves is what we should be doing and we do know we have needs. And I don't think we're going to be buying water from somebody else, so, you know, that's not a risk. I think basically you don't want funds restricted.
I don't want funds restricted until I know what our long-range capital financial plan is. You don't have one.
And what have you done in the last year?
Well, I'm glad you asked.
What?
LaBerge, working with them to basically ascertain what the correct path forward is, especially for the most pressing need of $1,600,000 now plus $120,000.
So LaBerge was done before you got here?
No, you hired them and we basically had a change of show.
And you didn't give them the data they needed for months and months and months.
I'm sorry, I can't create data that doesn't exist in our system, Ben.
It does exist. I got some of it, most of it, and I actually helped them.
And they have the same data, Liz, and they want more that we don't have. And Jen, would you like? Thank you. Jen's been working with Bob, taking staff time, hours and hours of staff time to work with Don on that. Ultimately, what Don ascertained was we have issues, lots of issues, and he wants to help get us out of those issues. That's what we've worked with him on on our end of this. But back to the question ultimately, we sat down, we figured out what the dollar value is and we're trying to go to our grant writers, see what they can offer. And we're also trying to work with our financing options as well right now to figure out what might be out there. But prioritizing, what is the question? What's your priority?
We're not giving grants immediately because he said, Don said, our fund balance is too high.
There is federal money out there too, Liz.
I think they look at fund balance as well.
It's state-based stuff. He's actually flagged federal grant possibilities to me in the last few weeks. So yes, there are things out there, okay? And that's what we've been trying to do is ascertain what our priorities are and how a long-range capital plan is going to be created here. It's not looking at a list and saying, look at all those things we've got to do. It's what are we going to do first and how are we going to pay for it? And what are we going to do second to pay for it? And what it doesn't answer is ultimately why you're going to risk the fire department's money here by not even funding a sidewalk. And in your notes in the amendment today, you suggest, well, it's not really their responsibility, so the village will assess it and take care of it.
Great. That's what we discussed in the workshop.
Actually, no, it's not. What you discussed in the workshop is trying to use an infill method on it instead to try to save money. Okay? And if you don't want to do the sidewalk, they had a list of five other things that need to be done for their building because their building's in such rough shape and we're being watched by the town.
I didn't see any other list of items from that.
Well, you have it. Mike?
It was provided.
If you think we, as a village, should be paying a fee to the fire department, then make that proposal. Don't say we've got to fix everything, you know, without assessing it. Go ahead and tell us what, take into account the fact that we provide the buildings at no cost to them and that we provide accounting services and stuff. And then, you know, calculate it and propose it. We have that information. The fire department has given that to us and it is our responsibility to, it is our fire department, it has a responsibility to take care of those facilities so we have up-to-date functioning buildings, safe buildings for them and the public. You have that information and that was, when I saw that you cut it completely to zero, I was actually shocked at that and it seemed like you're apparently not aware for some reason that they requested funds. And this is, for instance, the facade, facade of things for UNIN. That was going to be requested a few years. That's not new. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Mike, for confirming that. Before I even got on the board, they requested that and that this board has denied them those funds. So that's one area I certainly do not want to see cuts and I highly encourage everyone on this board to reconsider that. It's shameful. It really is. They do so much for us and really should be taking care of those buildings. We have Town of Milton, Town of Boston putting in their contributions for their fire services and we're not doing anything. And we shouldn't look at our own buildings, which are crumbling. No one's saying not to address them. No one's saying not to address them. You completely got it. The fire department's on...
The only request I saw on the budget from the fire department beyond their contractual things that they can cover is the sidewalk. I did not see a request for other improvements. And I think I agree though, the sidewalk doesn't need the address and given the penalty.
Email asks for a base shore repairs of $3,000 or a base shore replacement of $1,000, $4,000. That one made. UNIN, $4,000.
That's all those in. The one we kept was the sidewalk.
It's less than a penny per thousand and cents, okay? Or I'm sorry, just, no, it's right out of a penny. Front apron and sidewalk replacement was quoted 75. I've worked with, uh, 1,000, that is. I've worked with Mike Bayshore and get it down into a range that was 53 plus some contingencies, so 57,500 was where we landed with that. Facade repairs and entrance replacement has no dollar value, moved to 2024. Air conditioner repair replaced upstairs and coffee UFC to pay this. Re-point brick walls, engine bay upper window replacement, radio room upgrades are other things with no pricing because they assume that they would, as every year, get a project for their building.
They're going to request the funds and not make assumptions that they need the funds.
They made a request for 75,000. They got 57,500.
Well, I think the sidewalk needs to be assessed. I think it's...
It's Ben.
Who?
Who's tested?
Mike?
Did the building inspector look at it?
The D W...
I don't know. The building inspector doesn't work for me.
Well, the D W superintendent has been designated to do that. Does he come up and take a look at it? Ask him. I don't know. Well, I talked to him today. He hasn't yet. He will.
And he won't do that work, you told me. Well, because it can't, because of the way that we would handle that, it's not rated for the type of sidewalk we would install. You have tons of firework equipment going over that.
Right, but the large area that needs repair that actually isn't where the apron of the truck is.
Oh, yes, it is. Did I get your fish fry, Friday?
I'm just going from the photograph.
Come up tomorrow and I'll show it to you. I'll walk you through it.
It's in bad condition and yes, that's why you would need to see that it does need repair. So again, I just highly encourage this board to reconsider their position on supporting the fire department's repair needs for their buildings and including the sidewalk. We can look at it, just got to find, take the money from somebody else because if you want to keep the tax rate where it is, which is well below the tax cap, by the way, then, you know, we can raise the taxes.
Really? Tell me how much you get going to tax cap. Tell me what you get going to tax cap.
I don't have the figures in front of me, but the tax cap is higher.
So what would you get? Give about?
I don't have it in front of me.
$100,000?
Because they'll just run you a recording of you at some later date with a tax head.
Is it like $100,000, $250,000? What is it?
I'd have to look at it.
It's 1.5% of the total tax levy, Liz, which is basically $1,900,000. So it's really less than $30,000 that you would get from going to the tax cap.
Then we have to cut somewhere else. You know, budgeting is not easy.
I know it's not. I put together another budget at balance with that in there, with celebrations in there.
With a $120,000 bonus to smooth out your budget.
The bonus is a contingency line, Liz.
No.
Yes, that's where it is.
You do not put in the proceeds, a one-time major proceeds into contingency line. It just...
Really? Because how else do you get it to fund balance? You have to account for the intake, don't you, if you know it's coming?
Yeah, you account for the intake and then you transfer to a reserve.
And so in this case, what we did was we said, okay, it's six of one or a half dozen the other because if you put it in a fund balance...
Tell me, where did that 120 go? Because it didn't go to parks and trees.
It went to contingency, 115,000 and 5,000 to the Kelly Park.
So it goes to anything?
No, it goes to hopefully nothing.
And if it does go to things, then is it used for capital improvements? Not necessarily.
It can absolutely. Why wouldn't it?
Why would it?
Because it's going to be in fund balance eventually and it's not used, Liz.
And fund balance doesn't mean it's going to be capital improvements either.
Okay, so come to a... So get a long-range capital plan to show us how in the next five to 10 years, you're going to pay for $24 million of capital improvements using $4 million of fund balance. Bob Fox actually said to me, give that to Liz as a challenge. It'll keep her busy for a while.
You're the budget officer. Are you working on this, Frank?
I am the budget officer and I've been working on it, Ben. That's how we have it.
We have not seen that. We need for planning to do a study for long-term planning.
You've been here for six years. I haven't seen one from you either.
Well, we've had other studies come out. One was the water feasibility study, which had morphed into the water tower. And we've done other studies, studies in that regard in long-term planning. LaBerge did longer planning on water and sewer infrastructure, which is the vast majority of the long-term planning we need. The only other thing you need is buildings.
Really? Hold on, hold on. Excuse me. Who responded? How are we giving you 80 million?
You already said that we were going to have to either take out a loan or get grants. And hopefully, this was all laid out by Don, that, you know, yeah, it would either have to be a loan or...
So what are your payments going to be in that one?
Well, the other thing that people should know, that he may be keeping the tax rate low now, but the tax rate and the water fees are going up. And it'll go up after he's, uh, the election. And that's when you guys are going to see the... And it'll go up after he's, the election, and that's when you guys are going to see the rates.
She just told us she's going to do something, create $200,000 revenue for water that's coming out of somebody's pocket, Ben. It doesn't just come out of thin air, does it?
It has, you know what surprised me with current? They got like $43 million of infrastructure grants and loans. And their water bill still went up from a hundred bucks about to 600. So that hopefully won't happen. I was shocked when I heard that from Don. And I think we can all expect to have tax and water fees go up. If not this year, then in the coming years very soon, unfortunately.
And my plan is not just to put the 5% increase and increase everybody. Because if you look at our water rates, we basically burden the low user and give a real break to the heavy users. Our rates for, you know, the users that are 250,000 gallons and 500,000 gallons are much lower than any of the other surrounding communities. And so that needs to be adjusted to be a fairer division of the burden.
So I would like to ask a question to you, Liz. At the end of the day, you're saying basically we don't have money to, to building improvement our house, which will risk our funding. So that 57,500 you're saving now could cost you $500,000 over the next few years. Apparently you didn't listen well because I stated in this with no uncertain terms, and I've stated to you multiple times before, that the towns and buildings in Boston are not happy right now with the position of the fire funding. And the reason is because they feel that we're funding facilities with their money at the end of the day and show no skin in the game.
Well, we're not funding. When we put, when we put money into the facilities, that has been village money. We are separating out. We're doing a good job. And setting, guess what? Reserves. Reserves we're doing.
Reserves with what?
For the fire department.
With what money? Their own?
Yeah.
That's town money.
We always pay for, we are audited. We are audited. We are audited by Boston.
We paid out of our township money for the village building for years.
So there's that. And then the other question is.
The last few years, we've been putting in money into the buildings and they're actually the best maintained buildings the village has.
Nothing from the village. We get everything outside of the village. Nothing comes to the village. Nothing.
But you don't, you don't pay rent. Are you kidding me?
I like to protect the village and the outside, okay? I get paid nothing.
I know that.
You sit up there and what do you do? You complain because you don't get a little bit of an increase. I do nothing, okay?
That increase.
You want to put, you want to put trees that I have to protect. You're going to put trees in the ground. When they catch fire, we got to protect them. We get nothing from you whatsoever. All we're looking for is 65, 50, some odd thousand dollars to repair the sidewalk. If someone falls, there goes your 57,000 dollars. You're in millions of dollars.
Well, there are plenty of places in this village where somebody falls, it doesn't suit.
Okay, so we're trying to send that, but you're not doing more than.
So just to reiterate here, folks, folks, this is not a new conversation about towns being upset about the fact that the village has not been investing in its own fire department. This has been talked about for several months. This is not a new conversation. This has been discussed at board meetings.
It's been years, actually.
I believe years, at least, I apologize, at least since I've been on. I know this has been discussed multiple times and.
Boston built in an audit system to make sure that a dime of their money is going into facilities. And they actually called us on that audit and forced us to provide it just for Julia left us. And they're serious about this.
And to the point, and I know we're on fire department a lot because it's that important, but you know, to say that they're in there for rent free, that's ridiculous. They're providing a service to our residents.
No, that's part of the equation.
But I would recommend not wording that that way.
Don't charge the rent.
Do you understand they're providing free service, free personnel service to protect the community?
Acknowledge that, but there is value in those buildings.
That we don't provide funds to maintain.
We have provided funds in the last few years to maintain.
You know, it sounds like EML is coming around here, Liz, saying we need $40,000 automatically every year. They gave us 4,000. They were respectful because they know that certain aspects of their building are in useless shape. And they're basically deferring right now to Union who needs repairs. They have a list of 16.
We would look at it again, okay? Can we leave the subject, please?
Okay, so then the other part of the subject is, you don't believe that 2% of a budget toward cultural programs and social community programs is appropriate?
No, because that is a 362% increase over last year. Nobody else. Don't you think?
Did you hear of this thing called COVID?
No, yes. Even compared.
There is that. I did a little review of sales tax revenue in Saratoga County, pre-COVID, during COVID and after COVID. And other than inflationary gains, they're basically flat. So apparently events are irrelevant.
That's not true. Actually, actually. Because I got it right here on this slide. I couldn't see. I'm sorry.
Last year was not the height of COVID. And even compared to 2016, the Romano administration, they spent about $30,000 on arts and celebrations. What is proposed here is $60,000 for those events. That is a huge increase. I proposed 130%. Do you think that all those community groups wouldn't love 130% increase from last year?
First off, Sean, here's our share of sales tax revenue from 2019 for 1.06, 1.08, 1.14, 1.32, and probably 1.35 this year. It had a remarkable jump between 2021 and 2022 when we got back to life again. Remarkable.
Yeah, without the analytics of actually handing out tickets at family fun day. So you've actually had a number, because those numbers are pure speculation.
Of what?
The number of people attended. Did you hand out tickets?
I know.
Well, the point, the point I'm making is that.
It's a worthless event. It's a worthless event, say.
It's a worthless event without hard analytics.
We're out. You guys, no more out here.
Now, quality of life is entirely different than using these as marketing. And I understand there's a quality of life issue associated with that. And that's why they're continuing to be funded and their funding is being increased. It's not just being loaded and extorted, you know, hundreds of percent. I mean, that's utterly nonsensical.
You do it. We're done.
Fine. That's what you threaten every time.
No, that's what I'm promising you right here, right now. We are done. You take your money, you get the volunteers, you put in the hundreds and hundreds of hours of work and you do it. And see what it costs you because you know what? This guy right here used to put in his own freaking money to make these events happen.
Much like Ray. Much like Ray went to the park and everything else.
Because it was my money. It is my stock. I was pulling stuff off of my shelf, my supply shelf to make things. Easter, Easter, we went over, you know, you guys put in $1,200. We went over 15, $1,800. If it wasn't for a check from Mr. and Mrs. Frank and Maria Rossi, that would have been a deficit, okay?
I think you want to talk to BBSBPA and find out how they do it. Because they put on a number of huge events, the car show.
The car show, they charge people to come in.
Well, maybe then you should look at that too.
Don't even do it.
After we charge the fire department rent, we'll look into that. So, so before we lose sight of a lot of things, I think it's really important that, I think it's really, you know, I'm having, sorry to interrupt, Mary. I'm having business members talk to me as this whole conversation is going on. And one in particular has taught how important events are to our community. Not just, you know, for the family, families that, you know, need entertainment for their children, but it's actually good for their businesses to have people downtown. And I just wanted to add to the conversation so we don't forget that.
Can I ask?
So can I, can I add a point? So all these things are going up this year compared to last year. So last year, we allocated $8,500 to family fun day. This year, where I think Liz put in there $10,000. And so that's an increase. And in my opinion, that's plenty of money for a one day event, to have a nice event.
Do it. Do it.
That doesn't mean you don't, there doesn't need to be fundraising to supplement it potentially. But $10,000 for a village's size for one day, in my opinion, is enough. Same with single birdhouses, in my opinion. I'd rather, I like the birdhouse project. I'm glad you've done that. It's done great things. I think $5,000 is enough for a birdhouse project in Liz's budget.
Based on what? Based on what?
Based on my sense of how much money is worth. So in Liz's budget, it's 8,300 or something. So it's higher than it was last year and your family fun day is higher. So no one's saying, don't do it. No one's saying it's not valued. But that's just because you don't get every last penny you want, doesn't mean that it's not valued. You can ask for a lot and then we have to balance everything together.
You didn't get every last penny you want. I took it down numbers. Excuse me. I did. Take it down numbers. You took it down further.
I didn't see a lot of decrease.
So just to. Again, I wasn't finished.
You know, the fact that we're arguing so much about this piece of the budget.
Because it's important. Our community is important.
Both of you, stop. I got cut off. I'm not finished. All right. Sorry, everyone. When we had our, Sean, you're smirking. Don't smirk. This is an important conversation, whether you think it's not, or, you know, certainly there are a number of us that think it's very important, including me. And to belittle the fact that we think it's important is unnecessary. But what I was trying to say was that our businesses also think it's important. It brings people to the downtown. I cannot tell you how many people that are from outside of the area. They're like, oh gosh, Boston Spas is doing so much. I'm coming down for the birdhouses. And you know, iron rush is really good. I've been there before, but to go there again. And there's a cyclical, cyclical is not the word I want to use, but there's an effect when people come into our community that they're going to be spending money and it does impact us. Our businesses are very important. Our community is very important to the wider capital region. And this is a way for us to showcase what we are as a community. And that means people eventually move here. I can't tell you how many of my friends want to move to Boston Spas. And so we're probably not going to come to some sort of agreement tonight, but again, I'm going to encourage. I encourage all of us to really, really seriously reconsider cuts to that. I think, you know, Ben, I don't know that when we had our budget workshop, you know, there was, poor Mark and I and Barbara were talking to ourselves a lot of the time because he was there to explain the programs. Not a lot of people were there to listen at that moment in that budget workshop. So I think a lot of people missed some of what Mark could have explained, at least for the community events. So.
Well, this would be the no cuts. There's increases.
Yeah, there are increases.
Significant. 130%. Please don't be.
No, Liz, because, because the numbers actually changed between the budget last year and the actual events last year. So your numbers aren't actually accurate across the board.
That's because you came in as.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I can't, I'm sorry, Liz. I'll try better next time.
I'm not going to argue this anymore. I mean, we spent too much time on this topic when we have much bigger fish to fry.
So your village residents, the ones that are the low income residents that you tout all the time, are, we got bigger fish to fry.
Yep. We got to make sure they have clean water, the sewer works, the sidewalks. And if we can afford and we are affording increases to those budget lines, but.
It's balanced and it's under the tax cap. Or is that a tax cap?
Okay, thank you.
The mayor using 100.
God, if we use funds that belong to the village, is there things we're seeking to need now?
For contingency line.
Or that. So, you know, at the end of the day, everybody is a little heated. But I think, I think the budget that's been presented is sound. And I know there's disagreement about priorities, okay? I'm not sure that we can change hearts on that, but I really consider, I encourage you, encourage you to have an open heart, especially about our fire departments and what their needs are. And the idea that they're getting free rent for what they're doing is just absurd. They're treating us to service. And again, the community events and arts, all of that really contributes to the community. And I forget what the figure is, new best and arts and events, there is a return. There's a fund return for every dollar you spend.
There is generally to the economy.
Yeah, and why would you want that?
Sales tax revenue doesn't go up if our businesses sell more stuff. Because the, the sales tax goes into a fund for the county and then it's divvied up by assessment.
Really? Betsy doesn't give another free meal to a family in need in our area every time something's sold or shops?
Talking about free meals. I'm talking about the distribution of sales tax revenue. It's based on the appraised values of the property. And unfortunately, we're not adding more property here, yet towns like Boston and Malthor are building new houses. And so our share of that sales tax revenue, it goes up, yes. But if you compare it to what those guys are getting, our piece gets smaller and smaller and smaller.
Actually, our assessment in Milton went up $9 million. It came down 8 million because of the infirmary and I made sure that we retraced that 42,000. That's what created some of the tax anomalies, but we didn't have judgments and claims because we were able to get Boston to reissue their role for 2022 in that respect. But Rich, to answer what you're murmuring over here about being landlocked, no, we actually have a few pieces of land that need to be developed and that will be actually contributing well, hopefully soon to the assessment roles.
But it's still one square mile, though.
1.6.
1.6 square miles. We don't expand like the local towns and the other cities and stuff around us.
True, but you know what?
What we have to, we have to look at, at our budget every year after year after year. Where are you going to get the revenue besides your state aid and your federal government? You have to get it from your property taxes and everybody else is getting it.
In the water, Rich.
In the water. But again, the water is, they need that to provide the service. And also, I mean, it's a tough nut to crack, no matter what you do or how you do it. And sometimes it's not a matter of not, of not having a program or cutting, you know, you can have all of a program, maybe they're not as big as they used to be this year. Maybe they have to be adjusted for next year or something like that. Sometimes one outfit or one particular thing has to take a hit in order for things to carry on so that you still have those items in the future. And it's called working together. And that's what has to happen. Where our situation, like I said, with, with between, we have no major industries, anything like that. We, we, residents were passed. We got a lot of tax in top properties between the schools and the counties. We have no way of getting that.
Well, let me, let me point out something to you. Scotia has 77,000 people and the same about square miles as we do. And has virtually the same services, water, police, fire, et cetera. Know what their tax per thousand assessment? Do you know what ours is? Let me start there. About what? $5.40 is, I think, what we have on this one. $5.40. I'm sorry. Thank you. $5.40. Scotia's fifteen dollars per thousand. And that should tell you, that, that should, that should tell you that if you think that we're suspend trips here in the village of Boston Spa, the way that we conduct ourselves as government, it ain't true, it's not even close to true.
No, I'm not saying we're suspended, I'm telling you what restrictions we have. That's what I'm telling you. I'm not telling you that we're going out throwing money all over the place. I'm telling you that what we have, what we have to, to, uh, control, in order, in other words, you don't buy a BMW when you only got money for a Volkswagen. You could, you could get a vehicle, you're going to get transportation, but you're not going to get necessarily all the money.
I think right now we're trying to put events on that are two thousand six Honda Accord, and trying to make them look as great as possible, and that's taken a lot of work, a lot of donations, a lot of volunteering by people, but we've reached a limit on that. Hey, well, the mayor, I, in standing right now, can, I'm not getting on, so...
I have a quick, um, the village of Boston Spa, maybe one point six miles. I live in Malta. Name it, I, Kathy Ice woman, sixty roundway through. Uh, I'm a member of the Boston area seniors and the Malta seniors, and I have to tell you, your village is outstanding.
Thank you.
The comments that I hear, I'm, I'm never home, you can ask my husband. Um, the comments about the town, the village of Boston are amazing, the events you do, the businesses you have, the people that they meet here. Nobody talks about Serpents Springs, in fact, they don't want to go to Serpents Springs after eight o'clock at night. Let's, let's be serious, the town of, the village of Boston is so welcoming. Everybody goes to the Serpents Beach, everybody goes to your market, everybody walks the street, everybody's excited about your birdhouses. You can sell some of your birdhouses for fifty dollars, I would definitely buy one, the one I made, probably. You know, you guys, you have such a treasure here, and it's not easy, you know, my mother went through this. It's not easy to be in government, and thank you all for your service and for your time, because this is not an easy job. My husband thinks he wants to do it in Malta, he's certifiable, but he's married to these, you guys have one fact. But you guys, you have a treasure here, you do, you have services, you take care of your citizens. I applaud you, I mean, you guys, you really have a treasure, so, please, please understand.
All right, stay outside, even if we're out of the agenda order, but it's a very segue into what I want to say. Very segue to what I want to say, um, Kevin Proppin fired upon thirty-seven years, just got out of ranking chief. Going now again as assistant chief.
They're, you said they're chief, you didn't want to be nuts, but I just want to say, I, if I didn't say, on behalf of my assistant chiefs out here too,
that first of all, we're concerned a lot of people in this room, that's a very cold violation. The three of us to leave here will put you right in the know. So thirty-seven years, and I've seen a lot of criticism over the years, I've seen a lot of, I'll say raping our budget over the years, the fire department, okay? We are struggling to get what we need now because of money that was used for other things outside of fire department.
I know.
Okay, so even when you've been on board this, all you guys, last few years, all that money has been going to, uh, the buildings, nothing's coming from you. Our money that we get is supposed to be for fire protection. How many people in this room live in the village? Wow, okay, um, gentleman in front row, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you, how much you pay for fire protection?
Uh, I don't know.
Take a guess.
Zero, no?
Who in the room pays for fire protection that lives in this village?
That lives in the village?
That lives in the village.
We don't have a separate tax.
No.
We have it.
Okay, so that's my point, all right, so...
You should, really.
I know, you know, and I've been saying it for a long time, honestly, and I don't, I'm not into increasing, I live in the town of Milton. I pay, I'm a volunteer firefighter, okay? I was up three-thirty Eastern morning, had a fire on Bass Street, we had a fire in the wall, we vacuumed people, made a quick stop.
There within two minutes.
Yeah.
Two first responders, like that.
Charlie lives on the road, yeah.
I'm on Bass Street.
Yeah, so...
We're right there.
Quick response, you guys, we are, we're not going to, you know, pass off on the back, but we, we are a unique fire department. If you all have a scanner and listen to the Serpents County Fire, they are struggling out there in the county for fire department volunteers. Now, Boston Spa, my son here, I started his junior program when he was fifteen years old. He's now my first assistant chief in this village, and that's what it is, is a lot of family tradition and family that's come up to support the fire department. So really, my plea here is for you people to help us here and work with this village to ask for them to support us in every way they can. And not only mentioned for the money that, um, we're going to ask the village to put towards the building, we do the labor. Typically, everything that we've done to those buildings has been free labor. So if we, if you want to charge us rent, we'll start getting contractors that'll, that's seventy-five to eighty dollars an hour, okay? So let's leave it at that.
Don't want to do it, but I think we need to discuss where...
We will never stop supporting you people no matter what, okay? At three in the morning, you got a broken pipe, you got three feet of water in your basement, call us, people do now, call us, we'll be there. Christmas Day, we were out pumping basements, Christmas Eve, we were out pumping basements, leaving our families alone, with the presents under the tree, waiting for us to get home, but that's what we do. We're here for the community, I've been doing it thirty-seven years, I love it, I love you guys, and call us if you use, I'll leave it there.
So the question becomes, what next? Because we have accounting issues with your amendments, et cetera, so what are we going to do? What's the track to getting a budget line made first, Liz? Because you have to, A, balance it, and B, do it with accounting appropriateness.
Well...
Regardless, regardless of this discussion.
I need access to an accountant, and I did reach out to Barbara, and she said she didn't know what the codes were, that's what I was talking about. So if I can have access to an accountant who can look this over, talk with me, and, and make sure it's balanced, and we can look at the fire, but I just do not believe in taking that hundred and twenty thousand or four, three sixty or four whatever, and using it to balance the budget. It can be used for capital expenditures. That are related to parks and streets.
What I suggest is, um, listen to the public comments here tonight, and, uh, Liz and Frankie adjust your budgets as needed, and then we have a special meeting to, uh, resolve our differences, uh, potentially next Monday.
Let me, let me ask a question to Liz. If I can find money to replenish the celebrations and arts and the fire department, even using your draconian approach without the long-range plan?
With, without, what do you mean? Without, without using money from Witsell?
Correct, because you're already putting six hundred, ten thousand dollars out of fund balance, you're going to deplete our fund balance down to three point six million dollars.
I was moving it to, from Fund A to, to, to the, um, to the other fund, it wasn't, it wasn't depleted.
But you can't use it for F, you got to use...
That's what, again, let me talk to an accountant, tell me why we've got the fund F on the books.
We don't, we do not have it out of AccuFund, they did not even put it, because we do not use it.
Well, that's a different story, we have it on our A U Ds and our, in our system. That's why it was like, oh, we don't have to create it, it's there. So, you know, if they didn't put an AccuFund that's between the account, their system, is, is it that difficult for them to add?
They won't add it unless it's reinstated, but it's an operating account, it's not a capital account.
But it would allow us to see the water expenses and revenue separate from the general fund, just like you're doing with the fire department.
You would have to raise taxes if you took all the revenues.
We're not going to take all the revenue.
Yeah, what are you going to do?
Make the increases.
And do what with it?
Put them into Fund F, and then put them into reserve.
You're in for a penny, you're in for a pound with F, Liz, either you're going to put water in or not.
I don't see what segregating money that comes from a specific revenue source, how that impacts our overall budget.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you right now, please listen.
Because we're spending water money on non-water stuff.
Well, please listen to what I'm about to tell you, to remind you about this, okay? The whole concept of why it's okay to do what we do is because we have outside water users.
We have outside users, it's legally okay, but nobody else is doing it.
And unfortunately, or fortunately, or however you want to look at it, it's basically allowing us to not charge eighteen percent more in taxes.
Because we're subsidizing it with our water revenue, and we need that revenue now to pay for water. That's why we were able to do it for so many years, we never spent any money on, on infrastructure.
The segregation you can get away with with respect to these funds is internal users, because that's what's supposed to be paying for the actual infrastructure. We're not supposed to own infrastructure, except for our transmission lines outside the village. And then the orders which remain in A, you would have to make that segregation. We are not in a position to do that still, and that's what Tom's working on.
I don't see why we're not, we know how many users we have inside and outside, I can tell you.
Well, first off, we don't have, uh, districts in Milton to do that. We're working on that, that's going to be months, though.
You know, every time you make a delay...
It's not a delay, Liz, it's reality. I've talked to our accountants multiple times the last three weeks to ask, are we doing things right? Do we need to make changes? What's the implications of this or that? They looked at, on Saturday, Bob Box and I talked about your amendments, it's like, how's she going to balance it? That's number one, number two, she can't use F, number three...
Why can't she use F? Because...
It's not a capital reserve.
Because they haven't used it.
You're putting capital items into F in debt.
And F can't handle capital items?
No, it's not a reserve fund, it's not a reserve account, I got to be doing it, it's not a reserve account.
Okay, so maybe the solution is, if we can't use F, then we use reserve. Capital reserve for water, we put water revenue, excess revenue into capital reserve.
That's exactly what I said to do multiple times over the last year, after your A U D comes out, because we know we have profit from water every year.
We don't need to wait until the A U D comes out.
The A U D tells you what your profit from water is, Liz, based on an accounting, yes.
Well, we have an A U D left here.
We know, it's just, it is nine o'clock, can we continue this conversation?
So I, what I, I'd like to make a motion that we have a special meeting to resolve these amendments and vote on amendments for this budget on Monday, seven P M.
No.
Why?
Not available.
What?
Not available.
Just seconded, move the stuff.
Yep.
I'm available, are you available?
I'm available. How, how about Friday or...
That's the camaraderie there, Sean.
How about Friday or Tuesday?
Guys, I, I am out of the country, so the, I get back on the nineteenth.
When do you leave?
I leave tomorrow.
Well, then you can't make any of that, right? Which one, I mean...
Liz, I want to see you first balance the budget, I want to see you use, no F line, and then we can sit down, because I think there's the problem.
Can you talk to Bob and talk to Liz?
Why?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good, so Frank said you can talk to Bob, Liz, so tell Bob.
Like it's my permission to grant him.
No, he said I needed to go through you.
Well, because he does what he wants, politics.
Because he works for all of us, but I need to request...
All right, so you, Frank said you can talk to Bob, Liz, so tell him that.
So, in the meantime, if I could find some funds to replenish...
No, I, we need another meeting to resolve this, which day can you make?
What you're saying, we'll look at it in another...
I'd look like an insurance, otherwise why waste my time?
Why can't you?
Well, we have to look at it, but yes, we should, we should have a...
You can't have a meeting the nineteenth?
No, undermining the job, John is, so...
Okay, guys, everybody, why don't you resolve this?
No, let's get, no, we need...
Well, I made a motion, I don't know if anyone wants a second.
I didn't hear the motion served, so...
The motion was to have a special meeting to resolve these amendments and vote on the tentative budget with potential amendments.
People on Zoom that want to talk, I'll find a little public comment at this point, just so you know.
On Monday at seven, but, so that's the motion, and we can change the date after...
I'll second it.
Monday, what?
Mon, this coming Monday, seventeen, seven P M. Sean seconded.
Okay, you can't make the...
No, you can do it.
Can you make it?
When you can make it.
We got, I, I haven't even done my taxes, let alone everything else.
I haven't done mine either.
Well, then get them done.
Well, yeah, eighteen, can you make it?
Tuesday.
Tuesday the eighteenth.
Closing on Thursday, which is the, what, twentieth?
This is the Tuesday.
I'm asking with the thing, I don't know if I can hear it in a second.
So you literally don't think you're going to do Thursday the twentieth?
No.
Oh, no, yeah, Thursday twentieth, that's for sure.
So we have to talk down to the twenty-fourth?
No, no, well, yes, however, May first is the deadline.
Yeah, we don't want to go that close.
All right, I'm just asking, can you make the eighteenth?
I will try to make the eighteenth, but like I said, in the meantime, if I don't see a balanced budget from your end that doesn't violate accounting rules, there's nothing to talk about.
As long as I get access to an accountant who goes through this with me and tell me why we can't do Fund F, et cetera, et cetera, and then I'll work it out with him, and then come back with a balanced budget. And you'll come back with a budget that funds these items fully without using revenue from Witsell.
And you're going to honor that.
I will attempt it.
We're going to look at everything, and yes, we, we want to reach a consensus.
I, I, I have, I've committed to something here, I'm asking you to commit to something, that's how, that's how cooperation works. I haven't seen yours either.
I know, that's why we can only make it, we will attempt to do this, we will reconvene, and then see who has the best...
We're going to make amendments for Tuesday, so, yeah?
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't have that. All right.
All those, no, that's not your job, Liz.
That's true.
Can we, can we close up on the forty?
I get it over.
Okay.
You're doing a great job, Brenda.
Thank you.
Can we hear it for Brenda, too, and get this job right now, please?
All right, bye.
How's it feel?
You ready to take it back?
You're insisting?
Here we go.
Just everyone, I am getting texts from the public that I'm assuming it is really difficult to hear all of us when we're talking over each other, so just a reminder.
Can you hold the microphone also, please, for a public comment? Alex, you having fun yet?
Keeping me in our group.
That's our goal, and just give me one second, because if you want to get this back up on this, sorry. Reestablishment of official board-appointed Revenue Advisory Committee, Liz, just to shortcut real quick to the degree we can. There's no need to reestablish, the problem is there's holdovers, so technically I would have the right to appoint them. So what we're trying to figure out here is a way to incorporate the existing Revenue Advisory Committee, but also get some additional members on to essentially look at major proposals. You're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars of water revenue, this is not a small situation, and that's what the whole idea of the mayor's group, just like the ethics one was, to get ethics forward, and then have Julie add people back, because I didn't want to touch ethics in that respect.
Um, I think mayors and...
Success to this committee.
Yeah, under our board committee. Under our board committee policy, committees have directed tables meetings to allow the public. Mayor's advisory meet privately. I I just can't approve that for an important issue.
Yeah, I I agree. I'd be more comfortable with this as a board-appointed committee. It's it's been essentially standard for a number of years. Um, we do it officially and then reappoint it if necessary, but I think it should just, I think it would be okay to just assume this is a board advisory committee and distribute appointments among the board and also ensure there's equal access by all board members in the public.
Yeah, I my mind, and I've said this before, I said several years ago, I think we should be moving toward official committees for virtually everything and following the official committee board process where candidates are picked throughout the board. And we should probably change code to include zoning and planning as well um, because it creates uh, it gets new people into the system. Um, and you know, it enhances more people with more skill sets. And any member of this board, including the mayor, can have any advisory committee they want. It's just it's their advisory committee. It does not advise the board or the village.
I I take issue with the idea that ultimately, if you want to turn off the that microphone and number two. I take issue, sorry for being out of place for this. No, it won't work. I take issue that the notion is that people of our community that might participate in such a thing are not valuable resources that you would consider, no matter who put them on or how, ultimately. I think that's the mistaken point there. The whole thing of why I raised this thing.
Well, you're completely not serving.
Well, that's what you just said.
The official board, they can fill out a form and and be a candidate.
Those those forms have been a disaster.
They've been used by numerous people to to form committees.
Now, can you tell them to fill them out, Liz?
Yeah, if you have somebody who's interested, tell them to fill out a committee form. That's all they have to do. Nobody's complaining about filling out that form.
This last time you did this, you basically gave the kind of people you wanted in there and said, okay, for a pick.
Well, you weren't getting any candidates, so. Get get your.
Let's change to the revenue committee, and we have a motion later, so why don't we skip a little conversation for that and the motion, same with the next item?
Okay, that one is. The the next one is different because we actually got advice today from council, not New Balance. Notice there is a motion on a zoning committee whose purpose appears is merely to create R F P for a consultant to prepare a zoning based on the comprehensive plan. Not sure why there needs to be a committee to prepare an R F P, but my assumption is that this is also going to be a committee to work with consultant and amendments to the zoning code. This appears to be mature, as the village is still waiting for the committee and the end to finalize the draft comprehensive plan. Once that's done, as you know, there is a process in work for it to be adopted. Just a thought that perhaps this be created after or near the end of the adoption process. In addition, I'm concerned that this motion was put on by Free Char C's. That could look like a violation of the open meetings law. Just be careful.
Okay, well, the idea is to get the interest for that committee, get the people, have them start looking at R F Ps and be prepared to launch that R F P as soon as the comprehensive plan is done.
But this is how the comprehensive plan ended up upside down, it would be kind of confusing what the heck their job was because they they had that for a year, I think it was, before they even got on board. It basically was parsing minutes and stuff that was not under their guidance in the first place.
It has nothing to do, comprehensive plan contract with the end has nothing to do with with zoning.
No, you're not listening. You did the process backward for that, is what I'm suggesting to you. They should have had a consultant.
It wasn't backwards. I'm not sure I'd agree with that character's idea.
Well, it's unfortunately true with respect to that type of consultancy.
That's not waste time talking about industry.
Thank you, Ben. I'm talking. You're supposed to guide it from start to finish. That's why.
Amy was submitted early on and a consultant backed out.
Yeah, they backed out.
That there were unforeseen contingencies.
So when Amy, I was at the meeting when Amy came on for the first time, and she looked lost as to what the heck was going on and why they were basically being shoved a bunch of meeting minutes already done in that situation. Peter, remember that as well when you came on board?
This is irrelevant, but anyway, it's.
It's not irrelevant. This is.
It happened because the consultant switched. One left and another one came on, unfortunately. One one backed out after they started. So what? Why are we talking about that?
No, I'm not taking away from them in that respect, Liz. The question is, when you had the consultant come on, they were lost as to what even their role was.
That's irrelevant to the motion under consideration.
Well, the it's not irrelevant because the process here is to normally have the board do an R F P at the proper time because your R F P's got to reflect what they're being asked to do. And if there's still changes being made to the comprehensive plan, let's say the county says, no, you advise a change X, Y, or Z, then that changes the comprehensive plan and changes the R F P potentially. That's why you do wait a little bit here to make sure that that's not gonna happen.
Well, you can have the R F P, the main body of it, and you attach the comprehensive plan as soon as it's passed. You have the final copy, and that's what's attached.
Even the state with the B O A basically says, do the R F P, then go get your committee afterward.
No, they didn't.
Yes, they did.
Step two, step, the first step on the B O A, and I can show you the document, says form a committee and then book that in our R F P.
I I understand what you're saying. I I have been talking with Matt from, yeah, Matt Smith from the Department of State. In this particular situation, it's been kind of, we found at least in our discussions that pursuing an R F P first would be most sense for the village. Um, again, regardless of B O A or not, our attorney's saying we're too ahead in this process, too far in the steps. Um, so I I get, I get. Everybody's eager to kind of move forward. I I understand that. But we're we're still not finished with the comprehensive plan. Um, we as a board are able to pursue the R F P ourselves. I don't, you know, it would be good to have input from whoever consultant is, the kind of makeup, the diversity of a committee. Um, you know, there's been a number of times where we've been developing ourselves, and I don't know that we've always hit mark on that. So, um, I don't know, I just would like to to, you know, just pause. There's no need to rush in this process.
So my opinion is every single step takes longer than you think it's gonna take. It could take. My my experience is you think how long some some, you think something's gonna take you multiply by three. And so just getting the committee together will take some time. And our fee is gonna take time and consultant take time, so it behooves us to start now to do these steps. And it doesn't mean we have to jump the gun, but it means it's in process. And I think we know what we know the direction we're going. I think you might as well take the next step of formally creating a committee.
But Ben, for the purpose of creating an R F P for a legal document.
And for working with that consultant that's title, okay? It it's the committee, and each of us gets to pick two people.
Go back, go back. I have no idea what you just said, so.
I said wording is what you commented on, that the to develop an R F P and to work with the zoning committee to review current zoning and recommendations to the board. So this is title, okay?
I'm not even paying attention to that title. That wasn't where I was finding this, you know, criticism, too, I guess, in the lack of a term. The whole idea here is that you've got a bunch of laypeople probably coming up with an R F P for a legal process, a legal document, and I don't know how that works.
That works with them looking at other R F Ps and has them working with our attorney to make sure that it meets all the legal requirements. And that is the way most consultants are brought on. They're not brought on, you know, we have enough work to do then to to develop an R F P. Let the committee work on the R F P.
This is one of the most important things that is gonna happen in our community in quite some time.
It's an R F P. It's not the contract.
Regardless, I don't know that we need to throw additional people to work with Carla at this point. She's got, you know, I I have Boa staff to work with her on. Um, you know, quite frankly, she's got so many people on her own board that she's answering to and and multiple things that we're trying to accomplish, like law changes and negotiations that took way longer than I could. Let me finish this. So for now, I'm just thinking literally workload for herself. I don't think it's wise to add a whole nother group of people working with her until we sort out some things, let some other processes go through. What's in ours?
I just, every time we make a suggestion, let's do it later. Let's do it later.
What I'm merely suggesting.
We're talking about the first step being forming a committee. That'll take at least a month.
What I'm merely suggesting, if you, I quite honestly, if you're ignoring the fact that she's been really busy with stuff, I honestly, with all the things that we've been dealing with in the last few months, like with the law, my Boa stuff is is been delayed. And it's, I quite honestly, I'm a little frustrated by it. So for me, yeah, I'm being a little maybe protective because I I know I need to have have her do Boa stuff for me. And I just know if we're adding additional stuff, not saying don't do it, but I'm saying timing is important, and please don't ignore that or just a little of that.
No, I understand. And as far as your processes, you're having Carla do all the work to develop your R F P when you could have a committee together already to do that work.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, yes. You know, you make Carla jump up and down for everything you guys need, and I try to give her some respect and space. And, you know, this is something that, you know, by the time I was able to work on it and they got another person, not consultant, but another staffer from the Department of State, like, this was already worse. So don't don't act like this. I apologize. I'm trying to formulate my words, but, you know, for for some, I think it's just rich, basically. You guys have her do so much and then discredit her consultants, her her recommendations as our attorney. You just are making busy work for her, and I would like to work with Carla on it, but my God, I can't even get that because I can't even have those conversations with her because she's putting out fires left and right. And so I I would recommend that wait. Please, please don't discredit that because it is a real issue right now.
Can we do this in the context of the motion, which is actually on the agenda? So the motion says.
Well, folks, folks have a right to hear for public comment what the meaning is there, Ben. Also, also.
Let's curtail the discussion so we can.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you.
We're gonna talk about this again in a few minutes.
Ben, thank you. One point that I would like to make since I didn't have a microphone too is, Liz, you're the one that wanted changes. Then you're the one that wanted changes to the comprehensive plan. That's why it was sent back in the first place. The delay, 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 and you're trying to pin on everybody. That delayed us by about two months right there. We're just saying, we've always said, you can't really do an R F P for rezoning until it's done, done. And here we are at this point where we're back kind of square one. And we've got to go through the planning, uh, county planning process. We've got to go through whatever else is gonna be required, S E C as well. We have to finish. We basically had a preemption for two months.
Yeah, now we're about to finish. We've got the final copy. We're gonna look at it in the next week to make our comments. Then we're gonna send it to planning, and hopefully they will approve it, and then we can pass it.
And if they don't approve it.
Uh, I.
You need to turn on.
You know, we'll see. Then then that committee that has been got an R F P already on the table will just have to wait until it gets goes around, but at least.
I hate wasting people's time. I really do.
Okay, let's discuss.
It is. Public comment. Who's in? Are we, did we restabilize on the?
Somehow.
I'm not gonna buy that. I say I'll be indicated. Well, I'll say anybody on Zoom that wants to raise their hand, please do. We did have a couple legacy hands, I think, from earlier that want to get through. So while we go in reverse order, just out of respect.
Okay. The first one up would be Darvin.
Okay, we just get a reminder, five minutes maximum. And Darvin, if you unmute, go ahead. Unmute, Darvin. Hey, Darvin, we're gonna put your hand down. If you do still want to talk, uh, put it back up for us, and then we'll we'll assume there might be an issue on your end.
My person would be Cameron Parwana.
Come run.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Kamran Parwana, eighty-six South Street. Um, I'd just like to say that I wish I could have heard a real discussion of the budget tonight. Um, there are two proposals that both include some strong points to support them and and both have negatives, which is the natural outcome of this process. I know it's unlikely, but I would like to hear an actual adult discussion of those points and for everyone to work to find common ground. I honestly believe that every one of you, every one of the five of you on this board in the end have the best intentions of the village at heart. But, Mr. Mayor, instead of having a reasonable conversation about why you think your budget should be passed, instead of relying on the merits of your proposal, you turn this into an attack and a circus. Instead of trying to build consensus, you work to manufacture rage. The tone of that presentation was unproductive, unprofessional, and unnecessary. It's your job to work with the other people on that board, to lead them, and it's equally their job to work with you. That is not what you did tonight, and we're all worse off for it. Please cut it out with the theatrics. Stop trying to score political points and stop trying to manipulate the conversation to try to make your colleagues look bad. Instead, find a way to work together and get us a responsible budget everyone can agree on. Thanks, everyone.
Kamran, one point I need to underscore here is that questions regarding Liz's amendments have been in since Thursday. We didn't get any answers until four o'clock today with new amendments. And I, but my guessing occurred here because some of them seem directed directly at what I put up on Facebook as a last resort this weekend to finally, you know, let people understand where we were with this process. They should change things based on those that post it looked like because the question of where's the balance? The question of the firehouse situation, et cetera. So I I don't know what to tell you besides, we've been trying to work with her for the last few days to understand these issues because the clock is running out for this budget process at this point in time. Next up.
Yeah, Forman votes. Oh, wait, hold on. His hand went down just because of it.
Well, Forman, put your hand back up if you intended to have it up. If not, go. Listen, no.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no.
He's doing the wave. Shannon Forman. Yeah, kids don't try this at home. Okay, in the audience. Mike.
Uh, thank you. Mike, I'm in G nine Russell Street. I want to thank Kamran for his comments and implore all five of you to keep his comments in mind moving forward. And I just want to emphasize one aspect of Kamran's comments. And Mr. Mayor, again, it pertains to you. What I heard Liz Cormos present was a series of items in the budget and why she felt changes were necessary. What I heard from you, Mr. Mayor, was attacks. And again, if you have comments about. The value or the lack of value of a budget consideration that's being proposed, we all should do them. We don't need to hear you attacking individuals. And I just want to emphasize that point and say again, Kamran, thank you.
Next up in the audience. Thank you.
Keegan Paslich, twenty-five East High Street.
Bring it down a little to the end.
Keegan Paslich, twenty-five East High Street. I would just.
We gotta talk about this.
I would just like to say, I feel like you really can't put a price on the community events. And especially on our first responders and the value that both of those bring to our community. I think it's absolutely shameful that in Liz's budget proposal, that those are two of the items that are her main focus for decreasing. And I just want to say, Liz, you made a point that you supposedly used to be a teacher. Um, in some of your graphs in your presentation, I believe a lot of them were based on village data, but at least one of them was not. It would be helpful if you would cite your sources in future presentations. So that we can go and look at those ourselves in future and see where exactly you're getting that information from. Thank you.
Good point. I usually do put citations.
Thank you for the footnote.
Hello, Ben. Jared Iguuluji. Jared Iguuluji, twenty-four Chapman Street. Um, first, just a couple of questions kind of about the the process first. I appreciate that the budget was shared as a PDF, making it easy to print. If we could get an Excel version, that would be great so that we could use it digitally and and actually view the data a little bit more easily.
It's not, it's not recommended by our account to do that because of the ability to end up having multiple versions of the budget, et cetera. In our own house, uh, we were really careful about where we have the working copy right in there. So we have to be careful. I get, I get your intention, but it's not.
Well, you know, you you can also make a read-only version of an Excel file, you know, could could be protected to allow for that, but. Not a huge issue right in the moment. Um, also, I I like the last speaker, appreciated seeing some of the data out there. I'd love to see in the future, uh, as a resident of the village, year-over-year historical data for these budget items. Somewhere that's publicly available for all of our residents all the time if possible, not just during budgets. Also, just moving on a little bit, I I appreciate the presentations from both Mayor and and Trustee Cormos. I do also need to echo some of the comments that have been made already. Um, I felt that the tone, Mr. Mayor, was was combative from the start. This is a public workshop and an opportunity for all of us to share our thoughts on it as well. And that sort of tone automatically creates a combative environment for everybody in the audience as well. If we're going to find compromises in the village, we need it to start from our leadership. As far as some of the priorities that have been discussed. I'm very concerned about long-term planning, as may be evident by my comments on the comprehensive plan. Uh, I'm a little bit concerned as we prioritize increases in spending on events and cultural issues. Over those long-term items. Like many of us in the village, I enjoy our cultural events as well. I don't want to see them cut. At the same time, we have to be pragmatic and practical about how we allocate funds for our long-term future. And I'd love to see more of that, uh, in whatever ultimately the the board comes to with this special meeting. Um, specifically on the water issue, uh, Mr. Mayor, I I know you talked a little bit about water fee increases. But I still didn't hear anywhere in there about specific line items dedicated to improving water over this coming year and beyond. Uh, lastly, I'll just add on the note about committees. I appreciate personally the focus on a more official process for committee formation. I think it's valuable. It allows a larger, uh, resident set to be included in these committees. And I I'd like to see that continue, not just with new committees being presented, but with all of our committees moving forward. Thank you.
Jared, just one thing to sort of, if you go ahead and say, if you want, uh, the thing I've been saying for a while. And I I just want to underscore this is that. I have no objections to the idea of trying to do something with a water reserve account ultimately here. The thing I've been saying, though, is because of the nature of the way the water situation works for us here in the village. Wait till your AUD to see what your actual profit was. And another thing we need to do actually to understand our true property is to separate out. Office positions and money dedicated from that salary toward water, for instance. And we're actually working on that little by little. And next year, we hope to actually parse it out between sewer water, BW, et cetera. Understand better what everybody's position is actually being attributed to. So that you know what the real income from water is in that situation. And then going to the AUD, which is the actual, basically, short of the audit, the final look at that previous year to say. Okay, we had a blank income in water this year. Let's push it into that reserve account at this time. Because we know we have that level or some percentage of it. That's what I've always been saying, and we seem to default back to that for a second tonight when we're talking about it. And then sort of poo-pooed it again. I'm not sure why, but the idea is indeed. Putting it in, but only when you're sure that you are balanced and okay with everything else going on as well. Because there is a component of water we do rely on to operate generally too.
And I I again, I appreciate the answer there. Um, I I know that we have revenue budgeted here already. And, you know, frankly, I I appreciate Trustee Cormos' outlook on an increase in these fees. Right from the start, why not set a reserve aside for what we know will be large expenditure in charge copy? So.
She projected thirty thousand F and that would, I would say twenty-five thousand is what five percent would do in the first period. Uh, that it takes effect on. So basically, one period, well, next year will be affected by a five percent increase. So give or take, it's gonna be two and a half percent, twenty-two thousand five hundred would probably be the number. So I think she overestimated what that effect would be. I don't object to basically saying, we've got about twenty-two thousand five hundred more from this increase coming in. That's the whole genesis of why I proposed that five percent, as I said in the executive summary. It's time to start escalating that fee because we need to and put the escalation aside to the degree that we are able to. And so that twenty-two five, I would have anticipated going into something. It's just not the F fund because, again, it's not a capital fund like that.
Well, so I can, I again, I appreciate hearing all of that. The tone that you struck in your presentation seemed to suggest that Trustee Cormos was way off base with what she was planning there. And I think that that stirred a lot of emotion in the audience behind me.
Well, it it's, it is wrong from an accounting point of view, and that that was basically underscored eighteen different ways by Bob Fox Saturday and today. After he saw the revised, because I said, hey, just take a quick look at this. He gave me a couple, uh, things. So I talked about the points.
Do you support then putting the fee increase into a reserve?
I stated flat out that the anticipation is that that fee increase goes in. What we said about the fire, for instance, uh, fire situation, well.
Separate group of related issue.
Well, no, well, no, it's, we're creating a fund there too, or a reserve. And the idea was, let them finish the year. We put it into equipment for them, what would be anticipated to be excess. Saying, finish the year out or get close to the end of the year. Make sure you don't need that money for something else. Because once you put it into the reserve, you can't get it back out. And so the idea is the same, I'm saying, for water. See where you are at the May period. And if you're in that position with that excess, twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, if that's what we determine should go in, goes in. And then look at your AUD after that and say, can we put a little bit more in at that point in time, based on our overall structure of water from that year? This isn't a just throw it all in type of thing. You've got to be careful, and this was underscored too multiple times to me this weekend. You can't just create reserves. You can't just throw money into reserves because if you do, you're taking a huge risk. And if you misrepresent what the reserve is or mischaracterize it, when you create it, you'll have a whale of a time getting it back out.
Well.
I I also want to see the board take intention in setting these funds aside. It's it's something our comprehensive steering committee discussed a lot of the needs specifically for water improvements of a dedicated reserve fund for capital.
Trust me, Bob Bush gives me the slot for every other week, so he does.
I'd like to make a comment. We have the AUDs for this year, for the previous year, right? And and we also added to our fund balance, correct?
Depending on how you want to look at it, yes.
Okay. Then can we take that addition and move it into the water reserve special meeting?
The problem ultimately becomes right now, we don't have an actual determination of what really is water profit, what isn't. And that's what I'm trying to get at. We need to actually separate out salaries to.
Estimate what water profit is and take.
Don Rhodes is working on this, Liz. This is what you don't understand.
I understand, but we have excess funds that were put into Fund A.
How many excess funds?
We should have an accounting from our AUD, how much we added.
We're going circular here. We don't know what to attribute to certain functions.
If even if it's not attributed to to water, it's probably largely due to water. We can already take those funds and allocate them to the water fund.
You're allocating two-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars right now to be taking out a fund balance there. My answer to you is, I don't know. It was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand because of expenses, expenses.
Doesn't matter.
It does matter because we're saying, put the profit in.
Well, it's, it's not a risk because the need is so great. We'll use that money.
It is, it is a risk if you don't characterize and plan for correctly. That's the issue.
I I think we, you know. I think we can already take action based on estimates. I mean, on the water fund, we've already got a good idea of what the water expenses are. You you need to add maybe a few hours from the clerk.
A few hours.
Right, to do the water entry that was done for nothing by, you know, so you take that all into account.
What are you talking about?
A budget is a projection. It is not the exact dollars.
Four months out of the year of the hours of the deputy clerk are basically billing and collection. What are you talking about?
Okay, so you shake that into factor. You model, you look at what the estimated costs are.
Have you guys had a special meeting for this? I was just gonna say, we have two hands up on the screen. We have a hand up in the room.
It's Foreman back. Is that one of whom we're now? Yeah, let's get Foreman to set up a safety here.
This is what happens when we interrupt the public discussion with our response. I I really appeal to us to try to wait until.
Jared, was it instructive to have a conversation for a moment?
I I appreciate a little conversation. Thank you. I I also appreciate the meeting moving on. Yeah.
All right, Foreman, you are up.
Foreman, unmute. Foreman. Come on, third time's a charm, bud.
It's gonna be on the bottom left of your screen.
Absolutely. Unless it's a mobile device. Okay.
All right. So we want to move on, Marilyn Stevenson?
Sure. Go ahead, Marilyn.
Marilyn?
Marilyn, you're good to go.
Had another pop-up. Marilyn Stevenson, forty-five West High Street. And, um, I just wanted to say, in light of the very late hour. Um, you know, just a few points. First, um, I just think civility has to return back to the village board meetings. And I think that also includes the audience. And it's, it really makes me sad to think that. Um, the crowd has more control over what happens during these meetings. Remember, the, this is almost. A three-hour meeting. Um, very few people can afford to spend this amount of time at a public meeting. Secondly, in light of that, and the fact that these historically, historically, these meetings have never been this long. I think every single trustee is entitled to a very minor pay raise, and I wouldn't have a problem as a taxpayer. Paying that because all of you. Go through a great sacrifice to do these meetings. Um, the next thing that I want to say is, I was a member of the, um, and still am, I guess. This, the, um, uh, comprehensive plan steering committee. So I just want to set the record straight because I heard a few things that were not correct. Um, you know, I joined that process. I think after it had been in place about eleven months. And they were looking for members. And it just so happened, I saw a news release. About joining the committee because they were desperate. People were dropping off. Because the committee was structured to go through this very elaborate process to. Really familiarize everyone with the history of the village of Balsman Spa. So they can have an appreciation and move forward towards the planning process. And so I joined, like I said, about eleven months in through the, um, the actual creation of the committee. And it really was another year later before we finished our draft. So one thing to remember about the steering committee was, you know. These weren't just a bunch of people coming together. You know, the mayor at the time, and I'm sure you trustees, vetted who had applied for this committee. And we all brought our own skills and special talents to the committee. So. One of the other hallmarks of this committee was. It was done to basically have the committee members do the bulk of the work. So I heard something about, well. Our consultant, Amy Fitzgerald, was very confused about what her role was, blah, 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 you know. That was a design mechanism because it was a function of a very small budget. We got a lot done with people from the village who volunteered their time with very little money. Paying for the consultant, and it was designed that way. So, yes, Amy did have a very steep learning curve. She, and that was budgeted into the plan of work, but, you know. That was the way it was because it was supposed to be a comprehensive plan draft written by people from the village. And the other thing, I just want to remind everybody, you know, we did recently finish the last final draft and edit of comments. So that comprehensive plan final version will be coming to you fairly soon. But the executive summary says it all, and don't lose sight of this. So you have a plan for the future. The rest of it is really in your lap to continue moving forward. And I didn't hear too much of that tonight. You've got to create that fully, uh, basically the fully updated zoning ordinance to make this plan a reality. You've got to develop a unified capital improvement program for all village infrastructure. And that was one of the first major topics we tackled. There's been so much deferred maintenance. And no one's taken any action. There's been no planning, no budgeting, no dedicated work. Things are falling down around us. You have to take some action along that line of dedicating resources to move forward. And basically, one of the other components was, one of the charms of our village for the future. Is the potential to make this more of a village that is pedestrian-friendly. Support the planning and development of vill- of village-wide trial system, including volunteer efforts. Along with professional planning. So hopefully, that Woods Hole, that that, um. The, the sale of the Woods Hollow can basically be a dedicated source of revenue for that. the the sale of the Woods Hollow can basically be a dedicated source of revenue for that goal. Thank you.
We have more hands up there, I see. Tell me if Foreman Phillips is back up there, I won't believe you.
I swear. Let's move to Joan Marin, though she's been waiting for a while.
Okay.
Joan?
This is Christine Fitzpatrick, thirty one Chapman Street, Bolson Spa, can you hear me?
Yes, Christine.
All right, first of all, I would like to thank Kamran. I could not improve on what Kamran said. And in his statement about a discussion, you know, a a pertinent discussion. I would like to thank trustee Kormos for her deep dive into this budget and for her the graphics, which I find, I have always found to be very useful. I want to thank you all for working on this budget. Governing is really hard. I mean, we see that tonight, but we do have a lot of people on this board who have a lot of experience with village budgets. And I'm realizing that Sean Raymond, you've probably done more than than anybody around and then in this group. And then Liz is next, and then Ben, and so, which, you know, I mean, really, we don't want to lose sight of. I will say that you're, what I'm hearing is we still have some problems. We still have, and these will have to be addressed in a special session. We still have where our expenses are exceeding our revenue. We have to keep our commitment to infrastructure. Marilyn was just talking about that as well, as was Jared. We, you know, whether you have, whether you call it a reserve or a fund, or however you, we have to make long term, we have to make a long term commitment and long term plans and actually do it so that we have these funds in the future. I do want to say one other thing about in terms of style. And I think that not style, but behavior, and I think Kamran said it very well. I really see tonight, I saw tonight, I've seen it before, very much a violation of your own rules of procedure. I would really like to see that they were enforced and that they were enforced by the mayor, since he's the presiding officer. And I just want to read something to you. The public shall be allowed to speak during the public comment period of the meeting or at such other time as recognized to do so by the presiding officer. We have a lot of people just calling out whenever they want to, people who are, it's not public comment. They're 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 standing up, there's some of them have good things to say. But that we also have very consistently, we had yelling this evening from people from the audience. I have to tell you, I taught intermediate and junior high school. And a lot of times I see behavior at these meetings that I wouldn't have tolerated. You all would have been severely people, particularly a lot of them in the audience would be out in the hall at this point. Speakers shall observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Board members may interrupt a speaker during their comments, but only for the purpose of clarification or information. Please, please enforce your own and maintain your own rules of procedure. The other thing I want to say is about fire, and I hear, there is nobody in this village, nobody on this, this, in in this meeting who doesn't appreciate everything that that the fire companies do. I find it very distressing when, if you question whether, you know, a a an amount that the fire company should receive. Somehow you're anti-fire, you're anti, you know, Kevin Crowe, he's done wonderful service for our community. That is a very unfortunate portrayal of your neighbors. What what I will say, and this is another thing that I find somewhat distressing, is that we seem to lose sight of the fact that only towns can create fire districts, villages can't do it. And when people say, you're not paying village, you're not paying, you live in the village, you're not paying for fire. First of all, if you live in the town of Milton, I'm sorry, well, if you're in the village, you're paying village taxes. What I've been paying for the last thirty six years, those village taxes are paying for police, they're paying for fire, they're paying for services. So I think that's a bit of a sleight of hand to sort of keep saying, it's disingenuous to keep saying that people in the village are not paying for fire service.
Christine, five minutes.
Okay, and let me see. Fine, finally, the other thing I just want to say is about the STAR program. Be very, I would be more impressed with C D T A if they were talking to people before they suggested changes. Like standing at a bus stop at Malta Avenue and actually talking to the people who were using the service. And one last thing I want to say about STAR, because I've used it, is that it is door to door service, but it's also a group ride. Which means that you have to make, you have to apply, you have to make a reservation. And you also have to, are very frequently, since it's group ride, you can be in STAR, you can be in a STAR service bus and be, you have to go to where everybody else on that route is going. Last one signs up, you can be, you know, it can take an hour, could take it an hour to get from Double Day Woods to the county office building.
Christine, I gotta cut you off here.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Double Day Woods, so loves that service, I'll play flat out. The other thing is, just as an F Y I, check your village tax, if you live in the village, there is no fire component. And if there's nothing being paid by the village to the fire companies, then no, your taxes are not going toward fire. That's the reality, we've heard this argument multiple times, we've got to prove it multiple times, that's true. Mark?
Mark, like ten Thompson Street. I'm very frustrated because of the political theater that has been going on for the last five years since I've been doing these programs. None of the, none of the problems with the programs funding it would be, would be would happen if we were allowed to apply for the Mellon grant last year. We had a very good chance of getting it, but it was right after the election. And I gotta say, Christine is a, excuse me, is a hypocrite. She's an absolute hypocrite when she said decorum is important. She stood there in the office, put her hand in my face, said, no, I won't talk to you about it, and slammed the door. This was a great chance for us to get, they were throwing money at people. Then Sean, Sean Raymond here said I was unprofessional and undeserving of that grant and denied backing it. So again, this was, so this was a chance we had, he did it for complete political theater and payback for Christine losing the election. For whatever reason, he did it, and now we're in a situation where we're having to ask for money from the village budget to do it. We could have used the money that was, we got from selling the birdhouses the last year, after I, after the board wouldn't give me any money for the next year. But Liz Kormos and Christine decided to sell the birdhouses on the run without asking me, without my approval. And you gave the money to the library. So again, she's used political theater to take the money from the sale of the birdhouses and give it to the library. That was a misuse of the birdhouse, the money that would have been made from selling the birdhouses. So Liz, when you say all this stuff, you know, please, that they were taken, they were not, you know, there was a, that should have, that money could have gone to fund this year's program. But it didn't because you decided to send it to the library. This is my frustration. You guys say you love the programs, even though Sean, you've never been to one. Then you've been to a couple. Liz, you come to very few, and Frank and Bernadette come to every one of them and help out. Okay, you don't know what goes into these programs, how much time and how much dedication. This gentleman says we should do them on, we should do them in expensive way. You guys don't know what I do, I beg for on steel materials to get those projects done. As I said, everything has gone up. Last year, we spent a dollar for eight hot dog buns, this year, we spent a dollar sixty eight. What do you want me to do? Things go up. Eggs, the eggs went up, the candy went up, everything goes up. You know, the 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 things you worked on, Liz, were not paid for out of the egg, the cut out eggs. Were not paid for out of that, the Easter egg budget. That came out of my pocket. Those prints came out of my pocket.
Thank you.
What?
I said, thank you.
Oh, no, don't thank me, you need to pay for it. I don't have that money to continually doling out money for these programs. You know, Mr. Iaculci, you know, if you want, if you don't think it's worth it, you can do Family Fun Day this year, because you know what? I can't afford it, that's all there is to it. So hand it over, we'll give you the file, you do it, and see if you can do as well as we did. Put together a committee, put together a team, do it. Okay, then there's the Christmas program, then there's.
I'm sorry, is this appropriate?
It's appropriate for anyone who sounds. Okay, anyone who wants to take over these programs can do it. Sean, if you would like to do it, you don't come to one event. So you do it, you step up and do something. Okay, besides complaining about us, you do something. That's all we're asking. You don't do anything. Okay, for these programs, you want to, you want community engagement, then do it. You know, Ben is volunteering for one, one for Family Fun Day. We haven't seen you at all, and we, this all could have resolved if we had got the Mellon grant in, but you wouldn't do it. Thank you.
I'd like to correct your comments about that I decided to have the library, so I had nothing to do with that.
Who did?
I don't know, but I I volunteered, you know, but I bought a lot of books, but I had nothing to do with that.
You decided to take the birdhouses and not give them back to me so we could fund this year's.
I don't remember who made the final decision, but I know.
Someone on the board.
I, it was leadership in some way.
Okay, so one, two, three, we're on that board. Someone.
It was not put to a vote that I remember.
Decided, Liz.
I don't know, I was not involved in that.
But they weren't declared a surplus, did they, even if they were the most village property?
Who took them?
A comment I remember, just, I don't know anything about this situation really, except one comment, which was, there was a bunch of birdhouses, and I guess down here, and they couldn't get rid of them.
Before they came down.
Okay, I don't know.
I was not asked what I want to do with them.
You were not, they, they came down, they were going to be sold as a library fundraiser.
Why would they?
But I, I can't speak to who made that decision, but I know what happened.
This is, this is, this is why we declare surplus, to provide a notice that we're selling something of property of the village. This is the answer to the question you got, the wonder.
Was, was there an agreement?
That you would have known when they said it from that notice that, indeed, they're not.
Question, was there an agreement that they belonged to you after they were done?
They didn't belong to you.
No.
They belonged to the program.
Well, to the program, and it, and that program was funded by the village, correct?
No, it's not.
I don't know what the situation was, but I was not involved in that decision, so please correct that.
I'm sorry, because I have no proof that you weren't involved. I do know that the mayor at the time was responsible for that, Christine. Okay, anyway, this, you're at, you're saying I'm spending too much money, and I'm showing you that I was responsible with the money. We could have gotten the grant, but you decided to make it a political payback. Well, Mark, calling me undeserving. Okay?
Next up. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Patty Hansen, and I live at eight twenty eight Greenwood Drive. I'm here because I spend a lot of time, I volunteer with kids, and I spend a lot of time with these kids being things like the birdhouses. And I've come out to Family Fun Day, I volunteer at these things myself, and the amount of people that come up to me. The the Family Fun Day, I came out with a bunch of kids, and we brought rabbits. And the line of kids that came up to me and were talking to me, and they wanted to know about the rabbit, just like, it was just amazing to me, how many people were here? How many kids were here? People were asking me like, oh, you guys cut dog nails, it was just like, it was just like you're saying, like, like different classes, you know, I I don't really know. There's a lot of different people from different backgrounds that would come up, and they were talking to us. I was, I was amazed at how many people came. And to me, to to find out that you guys are talking about not doing these programs anymore, it's it's really upsetting and sad, or, or, okay, so that you're, you, it's not being funded as much as it was. It's it's really late for me, I've been up since the crack of dawn, so I didn't realize this meeting would go this long. I I'm just. I just want to say that I I personally spent a lot of my time with kids, teaching kids how to paint these birdhouses, talking about the conservation with the birdhouses that, you know, the, these are bluebird houses, and that that's our state bird. So it it's just a big thing with the kids and teaching kids conservation. I have kids come out, I have their grandparents come and talk to me, I have kids, moms, dads, like all these generations of people that are coming to these programs. And honestly, that that's why I moved here, because my my in-laws lived here, and I would come to like the, you know, the the programs that are here. And I was like, oh, my God, I want to raise my kids here. And so I'm here, I I volunteer here, I volunteer with the different things, and I I just want to tell you from the kid's perspective, from the grandkids' perspective, that this is an awesome community, and I I just want to put that out there, keep these programs running.
Do the correction, we are not cutting any programs, you know, we're not, and we're fun, you know, the budget that I put together is a hundred and thirty percent increase over last year.
No, it's it's not, it's an increase over what you budgeted last year, and that was revised later for an actual numbers, you gotta stop that.
What is the correct?
I'll retract that, okay, I just want to say that, I just want to put it out there that the the community really enjoys these prod, these programs, okay? That that's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Can't wait to judge some of them, to be honest with you. We're really gonna get a thousand back.
We have eight hundred back right now.
I've got pretty few, like.
Bring them, and I'll need a dedicated few days to do this, I think, at least. Do we have anybody on Zoom, just to kind of sway back here?
Let's go with Kristen Percy, she was not quite as awkward as I thought.
Hi, everyone, Kristen Iaculci, twenty four Chapman Street. Really, just quick question, for those of us on Zoom, we were not really able to see the presentations from the mayor. And I was hoping that we would be able to see the presentations from trustee Kormos and the mayor posted with the minutes and the the meeting recording so that we could, you know, review those two comparison presentations. Thank you.
I, as I said earlier, that was unintentional, I, we just said, we thought we had the tech worked out, and I will get that somehow up somewhere. So Kristen, stay tuned for that.
We we should put both versions of the budget I would recommend on the official website.
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
But we we only have one budget, we have amendments to the others. So that's, that's the thing you gotta be careful about, too.
We could put our graphs on, which were interesting, people have said that, that's of interest, and I think they would find it interesting.
I have this, which is your budget and then mine, so that people can look at side by side, and then I have a list. I think this one is fine, well, this allows some.
I get that, but it could look like that's the budget.
But also, we, again, we have issues, I think you need to talk about first before we even put, like, yeah, fun stuff out there, because that can't be done.
Frank, would you like to try Foreman one more time?
If Foreman wants to try us, we'll try him.
Try Foreman one more time.
Foreman, don't let me down.
Can you hear me?
Foreman!
Whatever you need.
Go ahead, Foreman.
Palm Sunday, a week ago Sunday, two policemen came to my house at between four and five in the afternoon. On Palm Sunday, I guess, why are you here? We have a complaint from your neighbor. Oh, you you mean Evan Osmont? Yes, he's complaining that you took pictures of his house from the field across the way, the soccer field. It's not really illegal, but we have to respond to all complaints. Evan Osmont, he's the son of Liz Kormos, everyone knows who she is. The complaint lodged by Evan Osmont was ridiculous, but the policemen have to respond, they were courteous. They were courteous. Um, they left quickly, they were almost embarrassed that they had to come. But the fact is, I was more than embarrassed. I was really upset about it. I'm describing this encounter to illustrate how much thirty-three-year-old Evan Osmot, a new resident of the village, is like his mother, or else she's like him. It is not against the law to take pictures of someone's house, especially in a distance of over fifty yards, et cetera, et cetera. And I am in fact pursuing a complaint with village officials about drainage problems caused by the new construction. Evan Osmot does want, not want me to do this, and is trying to intimidate me.
We do not supposed to talk about other people at this meeting.
And you have to approach interrupting speakers.
The police must respond to all complaints, and he assumes I will be upset by this action. Evan's mother, Liz Cormos, came to this meeting today of the village bu- budget with her own budget. She wants to show that she is more competent than Mayor Rossi. Her intransigence will make the meeting longer and longer, as it has been for the past year of Mayor Rossi's tenure. She also did this to Mayor Wilbright, leading to his resignation out of frustration with lack of progress in getting anything done. In a nutshell, her strategy and her sons is, if you, if I can intimidate you, then I will frustrate you. Liz Cormos motto.
Thank you, Foreman.
I'd like to-
Liz Cormos speaks tonight, well, when she did, what's the silence that followed for several minutes? Nobody said a word. Her.
Mr. Phillips, are you done? Muted, so I'll, I'll respond to that. Foreman Phillips was in his backyard pointing, taking pictures at the back of my son and his partner's house, pointing the camera at their bathroom, at their bedroom, invading their privacy. He took pictures from across the street as well. My son's partner was extremely distressed by somebody basically being a peeping tom. That's what happened, and my son has pictures showing him kneeling down, taking pictures. So that's the best.
Next up. Keith. Five minutes.
I'm jury. Is the mic on?
Uh, just a close note.
Keith Lewis, thirty-eight East High Street, Boston Spa. So it is important to have different perspectives in local government, because diverse perspectives can lead to better decision-making and more inclusive policies that reflect the needs and values of the entire community. When local government officials have a range of perspectives, they can consider a variety of viewpoints and potential consequences of their decisions. Moreover, diverse perspectives can help promote transparency and accountability in local government. When officials working together listen to and incorporate input from each other, they are more likely to make decisions that are well-informed and that benefit the broader community, leading to more efficient and responsive local government. Makes sense. Sounds good. But the bitter truth about the brand of politics, Mayor Rossi, especially on your Facebook page, is that you would much rather weaponize and create a situation where you turn residents against one another, especially whoever you've chosen to be the one to be annihilated. I'm concerned with multiple things. Multiple. I believe in government equal for everyone and not exclusive to a few. I don't believe that you should be able to determine what rules apply to people and what rules don't apply. Our government works for us. We are allowed to hold them accountable. But that's not the case. We haven't been able to hold you accountable. I, for one, have attempted to foil requests, your sisters and Mark's harvesting, because that's what it's called by the Board of Education, in your property. I spent hours and hours-
Keith, I do not own property.
-being a responsible citizen.
I do not own property.
Your family's property. You call my house my property, it's my father's, too.
Actually, I don't.
So, well, is this gonna be a back and forth that'll take longer? And I gotta time that.
I got all night.
So here's the thing.
Just go let him talk, please.
I spent hours and hours going into the village hall and reviewing the information. Gathering up the names, gathering up the signatures. They were assigned, these were assigned. If you thought they were gonna be coming to this board for money on a consistent basis, which obviously you did, because you immediately gave them money and cut into the budget, which had already been set at the beginning of the year. Why wouldn't you say to them, I don't think that's a good idea? I don't think you should do that. It creates a question, and the question isn't answered. There are no envelopes on who returned the ballots. The election official have no list of who returned the ballots. We have a list of almost a hundred ballots that were signed with either your name, uh, with, with either your sister's name, Mark Lex, or Carol Johnson's name. You won by fifty-five votes. I would like to be able to applaud your victory.
No, you wouldn't.
Well, I would, and I'd like you to be able to fit into your job and do a good job. Listen, this isn't, you-
No, no. It, you're making actual legal accusations.
I'm telling you specifically, I, they are legal acu- they are completely-
So Liz got the chance to form it, here we are.
Just, this is unbelievable. It's non-transparent. It causes people to doubt their legitimacy. They shouldn't, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be doubting that, they are doing good work. I, I am glad that that work goes on, but I, I believe I'm entitled to know what the truth is, and I believe that we are all entitled to hold our government accountable and be responsible citizens. I'm attempting to be a responsible citizen, and that goes on, that goes on. It goes on to what happened with the zoning board of appeals. The zoning board of appeals made a decision, is Anna here? No, Anna's not here. So Anna talked, our chair of the ZBA talked about how impossible it is to get a zoning, uh, variance, a usage variance. She spoke, when you were impassionately trying to get us to create, uh, no, we don't need to worry about development, we, we're fine, and she got up and she said, whoa, absolutely not, you can't get a zone fix, almost impossible, we don't get them. So I, I did some research, and I, I read about exactly what needs to be done. We didn't follow those guidelines. I put in foil requests, you haven't responded to them. You, you made me appeal every time I put in a foil, which is what causes more money for the attorney. Now we pay double the attorney. Now we pay double because of that standard that you do.
You're tied up.
That, in a, you talked over me, so I'm gonna finish it off.
You're at six and a half minutes now.
Did you talk over me?
For a minute and a half, no.
You're at six and a half minutes.
A hundred?
Yeah, okay, then I'm done. Thank you. Terry, would you like to respond to that? It was up to you.
Um, no, no. You know, I think I'm gonna, um, let your attorney, let my attorney speak to me on the accusations that Mr. Willis made against me.
Uh, I actually meant without envelopes, et cetera, uh, that part if you wanted to.
Oh, well. I wasn't aware I had to keep a list of who returned what envelope.
How do we know who voted?
How do we know who voted?
How do we know who voted? If you don't keep track of who returns a ballot, you had them open-
Because the envelope, the envelope goes and gets marked in the book.
It didn't get marked in the book.
Yes, it did.
I reviewed every single-
I watched it happen at EML. The, they basically validate everyone inside the book to make sure it's a legal voter.
They did the year before.
They did it this year, too. Donna, you were part of the process.
Not every, not every vote was-
Donna, you're a deris, was part of that process. You went through absentee's and would mark them, correct?
Yeah.
Not every absentee ballot was marked, I also foiled and checked, it was not all marked.
Yes, traditionally, there was a mark in A, if somebody-
Not one I went through.
And they weren't done, Mr.-
Days. You know, you posted a, you posted an armed policeman at the table with no record of why he was there, and they told me to talk to you, and then you couldn't explain why he was there. Just intimidation.
Keith, you wanna wave, sir?
Yeah.
Because our staff is intimidated by you and is, uh, very uncomfortable with you because of what you do.
That's the truth, I'm very, very uncomfortable every time you come around.
Every single time we went in. Every single time.
So did I. But you still make me extremely uncomfortable.
I'm so sorry, but I'm never-
I'm not gonna argue with you, too. You have done nothing but, but tried to disparage everything I do, you were trying to make my family miserable.
I am thrilled you have the unit, I'm not upset with that.
Then why are you going after me?
Because I believe it should be fair between everyone, and because Mayor Rossi and his sister said that they would stop the comprehensive plan on units for everyone who wanted one, because they want to punish me. And I don't want my legacy.
What are you talking about?
I don't want my legacy to be that I cheated everyone else in the community.
It was, it was, it was Liz's A D U plan that she was trying to cram down, and we're creating basically a, uh, system for people that blatantly blew the law in the past. That was the issue there, Keith, it wasn't about the comprehensive plan, we were actually asking if they had A D Us in there.
You said that I should wait until after the, you know, I was advised by Carla to wait until after the comprehensive plan was passed, which I'm doing. By the way, I haven't gotten back any comments from the planning board, or the zoning board, it was said both. And, um, yeah, you, you wanna now punish people for not, for the village not enforcing its code. Well, the, the village has not enforced its code for multiple, for, for A Ds that are illegal, for, for other-
Sidewalks.
A D U, sorry. So anyways, you know, we can, we can try to go back and punish everybody. I didn't put in a sidewalk, well, I got a C O. Was it not the responsibility of building inspector to tell me you have, that I have?
No, it's not, because it's not a requirement for C O, as we just went through last week.
Well, okay, and that happened, and so guess what? Foreman didn't put one in either. Five years before me, there's no sidewalks on either side of me, we moved in town. I showed the plans to, to the building inspectors and everything's fine.
Liz, I just said you're not in violation of anything.
Well, then stop talking about going into the past and punishing people for what they did. What we need to do is move forward and correct these zoning codes, so that they're fair and they apply equally to everyone.
Let's go Gina and Jason.
I have this prepared, but I do need to comment. Gina, Gina Marosi, ten Old Glory Lane. There's a difference between applying for something, getting denied, and saying screw you and build it anyway, Liz. And if you don't see that difference, you really need to do a self-evaluation of why you're on this committee, this board. Now, finally, I get five minutes, because I've been waiting for several weeks to get five minutes to address you.
Keith leaving?
You bet.
Cause I just called him out.
You know what? We had the building permit for that building, Gina.
I know.
We certainly did, we built the building. You of course have that file.
You built the garage, you didn't get a permit for the apartment. Liar, liar.
I didn't say-
Okay, so first, first off, it is, first off, it's her time.
I got a frail. Let me know when I can start again.
You can, then you, you swing five seconds, just so you know.
I finally get five minutes, and I need to speak for this topic. After much arguing about why Mayor Wilbright has resigned, I decided to do something, I can hear you, Ben. I decided to do something that not Liz, nor Ben, nor Shaun-
I'm sorry.
Oh, Lord, oh, Lord.
No.
You know how many times she commented on everybody?
That calls from here, you did nothing, and he's breathing heavy?
It's not breathing, honey.
partisan hackery to the extreme.
Oh yeah, when you lied about, uh, her walking up, storming him, it's on video.
Oh, we'll get to that.
Okay?
We'll get to that. Sit there and take it like men. Okay, can I start again?
Yes.
I decided to do something that not Liz, nor Ben, nor Shaun, nor any of you in this audience has really done. I went and spoke with Larry directly. I asked him questions, I received answers. I can now say, behind a shadow of a doubt, and at the risk of Ben putting his hand in my face again, and then having Shaun lie about it, and how it happened, that Mayor Wilbright resigned his office because of you, Liz, Ben, and to some extent, you too, Shaun. Here's how the questions went. Why did you resign? Wilbright. I resigned because of the behavior of Liz and Ben, and eventually Shaun. I felt that the residents gave me a four-year mandate to accomplish things. They put their faith in me, but the trustees wouldn't allow me to accomplish anything. I became ineffective. I wouldn't allow, they wouldn't allow the mayor to be the mayor. Me, which they do. Wilbright. Several things. Getting rid of public comment really bothered me. Also, they were disrespectful and disregarded our village attorney. For example, the P U D D. Stephanie is considered one of the foremost attorneys in the area when it comes to land use law. It would have cost the village zero dollars to have her draft the E U D D legislation. But the trustees insisted that we hire an outside firm, Lisa Dagel, to do the P U D D at a cost of roughly eight thousand dollars. Guess what Lisa's first question was? Why isn't your village attorney doing this? Stephanie is one of the best. To my knowledge, no P U D D legislation was ever drafted. Because of this P U D D mess, the two years I spent working with the vacant property owners to develop their land proved fruitless. As you can see, all the land is still underutilized and not providing a better tax base. Then there was the retaining wall at Eagle Mat Lee Firehouse, Jeff from the D P W, and I looked at it, and we came up with a plan. Basically, remove what was there, reinforce the ground behind the wall, and buy special retaining, um, wall block to replace what was there. But no, the trustees insisted on another study, costing the village approximately fifteen thousand dollars. Guess what? The engineers came back with the exact plan that Jeff and I had discussed. Next, the painting of village hall. All I wanted to do was paint the front of the building, that's it, just make it look a little nicer. But no, the trustees insisted on yet another study. This one cost the village and the neighborhood of forty thousand dollars. The engineers came back with a structural study and an estimate of approximately two hundred thousand dollars. Keep in mind, I just wanted to paint the front of the building. That's it. Well, we put out an R F B and only received one bid for five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Needless to say, the painting never happened. And as a side note, I, myself, asked some painter friends of mine, to give me a rough estimate, I would have requested paint the front of village hall. Their quotes came back from anywhere to eight to ten thousand dollars.
Granted, it's a nine thousand, Liz, so please, thank you.
That's just a few examples. We were spending money unnecessarily and very little was getting done. Liz was constantly going rogue, for example, the mess with Whizwell Park. I had no idea she took it upon herself to go to the V S B P A and have them move the farmer's market. That was so frustrating and unnecessary. Ben would not stop with his ridiculous demands and literally hundreds and hundreds of emails. The amount was unbelievable and overwhelming. Then there was the fire protection contract negotiation with the town of Austin. Ben and Liz inserted themselves into that, and by doing that, bumped me out. Up to that point, the chief and I were in a good spot with the town, and we had landed on a figure of one dollar per thousand. But Liz and Ben, using their superior negotiating skills, agreed on ninety-five cents per thousand, costing the fire department money. Ben, if you have an issue, wait till I'm done.
I will.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. Truth hurts, huh, guys? Side note, Ben and Liz said that fire chief, who at the time was Kevin Crowe, invited them to the negotiations, said it was a surprise. So I asked the chief, because I'm going to do this interview and I want it to be factual, I asked him if this was true. He said, and I quote, negative. Next, Liz insisted I had to wait to fix zoning, although it needed immediate attention. She messed up my attempt for a grant for Wiswauk Park by posing as my representative. She wasn't and inserting herself yet again into the process. The grant contact person got annoyed with the games and we did not get the grant.
Thirty seconds.
I was not accomplishing anything due to these reasons, so it was time for me to step aside. Me, why did you go to camp all the time? Ben, Liz says, was because you wanted to spend time there with your newly retired wife. True or false? Wilbright, false. I would get so upset after the board meeting, so I'd go there to calm down. But there came a time that camp was not helping. I was constantly stressed. It was not a vacation and F Y I, Meg hates the camp. I went there strictly for my mental health. When I stopped, when that stopped helping, I knew it was time for me to go. So Ben, Liz and Sean, there you have it, straight from the horse's mouth. Yes, you are the reason for Larry's resignation. You have not learned from this. You have forced Ray out now and forced him to stop volunteering after forty years of dedicated service to this community. Just like Stephanie, you disregard Carla and treat her with such disrespect that I'm embarrassed for you. The bodies keep piling up and piling up at your feet. Start caring more about the village residents, business owners and taxpayers and less about your egos and power tricks. Do better.
Might as well stay there if they're going back and forth.
Okay, bring it.
Well, actually, I'm waiting till public comment and there is no more. I mean, I'm waiting till a board comment and there's no public comment in response to board comment.
Of course you are.
There's no, the back and forth will take about another twenty minutes, people. So you had your say. We're going to respond.
And I don't need to respond to that.
You've had your opportunity. You're done.
You people are showing your colors. The truth hurts, doesn't it?
I get the chance to respond though, so have fun. Next up. Jason.
Jason's or ninety nine Rollin Street. I'm here this evening to advocate for families and children in our village and across the community. Programs like the birdhouses this year have grown exponentially. So much so that there was quite a bit of news coverage. And we all know that that spreads from Vermont to New York and across a big reach. That's a lot of exposure for our village. There are a number of communities that are involved in the building of the birdhouses. There are a number of communities that were involved in painting birdhouses. I know I had picked up some for Girl Scout troops in Saratoga. I know Scottville's had to involve with the building. Seems like there's a lot of exposure on this and a lot of eyes looking at this. And the end result is we'd have a thousand birdhouses hanging in numerous positions throughout the village. That's going to bring a lot of people here. It's going to generate a lot of business. And business in the village equates to sales tax revenue. If you don't think that funding projects like this is worth it, I think you're shooting yourself in the foot. On to other programs like Family Fun Day or the the concerts in the park, okay? The bigger those concerts are, the more people come. What happens in Scotia, Freedom Freedom Park Concert Series. There are thousands. I know our little parks really can't handle that kind of capacity, but it happens. I mean, the refrigerators last year threw a lot of people and that was at the end of Family Monday. The North and South Dakotas are another big band. They draw a lot of people here. It's more business. Our downtown businesses are staying open later and they're making more money. They're drawing more people into their doors. These programs need to continue and they need to get bigger. People to come here from all over the place. I speak for my children. I speak for our community's children. I have an eight year old and I have a sixteen month old. He loves to dance. And we love to go to these concert series. We love to go to these these events. It's it's so worth it. It's so worth it to make them bitter. Please.
We're supporting those programs, which we may not. I think maybe we shouldn't be the only ones supporting them. All the contributors, et cetera. If you want to make it bigger, there's a limit to how much the village can contribute. We're a small village with a lot of financial challenges. And, you know, you mentioned the businesses. If they're making money, more money, then where's their contribution? They should contribute as well. And unfortunately, as I said earlier, if our businesses sell more, it does not result in proportionately more sales tax revenue for us. Because we get the short end of the stick because it's not determined. City of Saratoga has deals where they take half of their sales tax revenue. So if they sell more, they see a direct benefit.
So when you draw somebody from Schenectady that spends their money here instead of in Schenectady County, doesn't benefit us?
Yes, it benefits the county.
Doesn't benefit us?
A very small percent compared to the increase in business here.
Doesn't matter.
Ladies and gentlemen, the board.
Name and address.
Robert Bush, anyone to adjourn? Want to ask you guys, you guys had a budget workshop, correct?
Free.
Free budget workshops. And you guys pretty come up with the same budget within those three workshops.
There were there were no capital plans like this and we went through a discussion about capital plans and suddenly we have capital plans all over the place.
How do we get capital plans suddenly come out of the work?
I can't tell you.
That's wrong.
Because we need to be dealing with that.
I've been saying that for two years.
I know, and that's so have I've been saying it for four years. Capital plan, we now have capital plans for water and sewer. We have dollars. We have a schedule. Yes, we haven't figured out how we're going to finance each of these, but we have a plan.
That's a capital plan. That is what you need for a capital plan.
Well, we're either going to finance it. We're likely going to finance it. You know, bring out the debt service numbers. We'll run it. Donna has already given us a figure for that that first phase. And he said, you know, we need at least a hundred and fifty, I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
Yes, Liz, he actually said that. He actually said that the companies that.
This is my time. This is Mr. Bush's time right now.
Can I speak, please?
Can I say one thing? One of the things that we were told by Donna is that there are companies that will do this work and actually finance internally and as long as you take on their service contract or will do a different type of financing in house for the thing. So there is no clarity as to how we would finance this.
Well, our last time I knew part of a plan is having new financing and everything. Don't want you to finalize a plan. You may have a temporary thing where you can, things you want to do. I understand that. But in order to have a complete plan, you have to have the financials, whether it's grants, it's financing it, it's the three day fund, whatever you want to call that thing.
Contingency.
Contingency, wherever it is, have a way of paying for it. So putting a horse, the carriage in front of a horse, doesn't work. And I'm sorry, free workshops work out this budget. Yeah, you guys come up here and present two different plans, two different budgets. I don't understand why you guys couldn't do that in the workshop and then have a budget going on. You have a budget for me first. In years past, that's how it usually worked. I mean, I sat in in these workshops. I didn't sit in these past ones. I watched them on the recordings. I couldn't make those. And what I witnessed today on both sides, not just one, both sides, was ridiculous, you guys. Come on. You guys, we're not in high school. It's quarter of twenty minutes till eleven. We're still doing public comment for Christ's sake. What are you guys doing? Stop the bickering crap. You should do all this discussion stuff you're doing. Why can't it happen in the background? Why can't you guys work together to come up and present it to the public? Instead of trying to present it right here and bicker back and forth and so on and so forth. You guys have emails. You have a phone call. Yes, you don't answer your emails. Yes, you don't answer your text messages. I don't know why, but you guys don't. And you guys should. The agenda comes out. It's a Thursday now, Friday. I thought it was Thursday. Apologies. Because I thought that one of those.
Friday morning this week.
Because I mean, come on Friday. I understand. We all have lives. And I get that. When you guys are in this position that you're in, that weekend, you should be going over what that is and communicating back and forth. Because how many how many agenda items come from from you, Ben, from you, Sean, from you, Liz, from Mayor, from you, Verona? How many of them come? I see majority actually, to be honest with you, from my, seeing them coming from Ben, coming from Liz. Okay, great. But you wonder why these meetings go so long. It's partly because you guys have so many agenda items because you guys are working on so many different things, but nothing seems to be getting done. You need to push, concentrate on certain things, get them done and keep going on and on and on. So it's gotta wait and push it off to the next one. I mean, these meetings get ridiculous here. As far as the water thing, Mayor, you know, I say all the time, we need to talk about some sort of fund. Water, you pay for water. So that's you is it's Family Fun Day. We have to work more towards getting it that way. In a way, it seems like you're trying to rattle from here to paint fall, but it doesn't work that way. Does it work that way when you get your whole budget? I don't think it does. It doesn't work for me. I always screwed it. But you guys, I understand you guys have a common goal. I understand your steps of getting to that common goal. I really do. You guys have to work more together instead of being separate. And as far as the whole committee thing, you guys want to do. I don't, if you guys have, I didn't look at the form yet because I haven't had a chance to. If you have what party you are in that in that form, take it off because it doesn't matter what party you are. What matters is the best person for that damn job and have this person pick ten, this person pick ten. It ends up being this party picking ten and that party picking ten. It doesn't matter what party you are. You guys need to learn to pick the best people for the job. It doesn't matter. This person has this qualification, that qualification. You guys need this out to seem like you're doing a job interview instead of somebody just volunteering their time. And it shouldn't be like that. Someone wants to volunteer their time? Volunteer their time. They can walk up. They can have certain qualifications that they bring to the table. You know, I'm on the comprehensive plan. I know everything about the village. No, I don't know everything about the village. I went here for forty eight years. I know quite a bit, not everything. The stuff I I knew, I had contributed. And that's what the bottom line, that's the bottom line. Committee members can contribute some way, form or shape.
Twenty seconds.
And you guys need to figure out what that is and pick the best person for the job. Thank you.
Donna.
Donna Martin, twenty Chesterwood Court. So Liz, I just wanted to comment. I go to not being you up for anything. You just made a comment saying that maybe the businesses, they're making more money. They should contribute to the Family Fun Day. I don't know many businesses, including ourselves. We've been business owners here for twenty two years. Every year, we're just getting money. Okay, nobody's making a fortune here. These business people are here because they love this village, what it stands for, the community. I mean, this is why people, this is why we're here. We originally looked at Saratoga Springs and I'm glad that didn't work out. We couldn't afford it and it's the best thing that could have happened to us. So so I just want to say that they're not raking in the dough. Number two. We're lucky. We get to travel. We get to go out to dinner. We can do anything we want, pretty much, you know, but Family Fun Day last year, Pete and I volunteered from six A M. As many of you did, until eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night. Honest to God, it was the most fun I ever had. It's the most fun I had that year. And so if I had that much fun, how do you think the kids felt? The kids that can't afford to do anything, literally can't afford to do anything. It was just a blast and I just really want to commend all the people. Mark, you know, I can't name the people that worked so hard, but the best part was Mark's like really sticky, sugar covered arms. I mean, it was just a blast.
My bathroom was never the same after that.
Yeah, and I understand you're not cutting this and you are raising it, but I would ask you to consider raising it a little more since hot dog ones went from a dollar to a dollar sixty eight. You know, everything has gone up. And I just really want to consider how important this is to this community. But the other thing is, I sit on the board for my church, First Presbyterian Church. We're a poor church. Pete's on the finance committee. We are a poor church, but ten years ago, we decided to tie ten percent of our income. That was a huge leap of faith and I know there's separation of, you know, church and state here. But what we do with that ten percent is we give it away. We give it to the high school kids who don't have food on the weekends. We, you know, the money goes into so many different funds. We give money away to different charities. Some of it goes to mosquito nets for people so they don't get malaria. But the point is, we couldn't afford to do that, but we chose to do that. We chose to gift back ten percent of our income, not saying the village is supposed to do that by any means, but consider it a gift for people who are less fortunate than you. Thank you.
Did I? Dr. Duke is saying at the board meeting, Board of Education meeting last week, that eighty nine students in the Boston Spastas School District are classified as homeless.
It's higher. It's higher.
It's I was really taken aback by that number when you said it the other night and I was like, wow. Peter?
Twenty Chesterwood Court, I just want to say one other thing about our church. We do a love in action. If anybody wants to donate to that, that's Florida high school kids that are homeless. You know, this this, the family, the events, I think you guys can figure it out. I mean, I really think you can come to some conclusion and make it work. She didn't tell you and maybe she didn't want to. I grew up extremely poor. I don't think Donna had any more money as a family. I mean, we lived week to week. We didn't have a car sometimes. My biggest thing in my life was when I went to the Duchess County Fair. That's we never went on a vacation. My whole childhood, never went on a vacation. And then we couldn't afford to go there anymore because it was expensive. And we're doing this Family Fun Day and we seen a lot of people that really wouldn't go anywhere else. So if you can figure that out, that'd be great. And I think between the five of you, that you could do it. Thank you.
Manny.
Very nice, Pete.
I'll make this really short. Andy Ryder, Nine Heritage Place, Boston Spa. Just a couple of things. I'm only speaking for myself. I'm not speaking for Mary, Donna, Martina, anyone else on the task force. But listening to all that was going on, it was, it is the most time consuming thing that I've ever been involved in. And it is absolutely incredible. I understand the money. I also understand that now with the bouncy houses, a large expenses, we have to have people from their company covering the bouncy houses. But the high school kids that came out for special, you know, for the community service, the talking with all the different C S Es and the special kids they came, it was incredible. And you know that. My one thing too is when there was a comment made about the businesses that could contribute, they do. And I have a list of rebuilding together with the friends of the library and with this, the stores that we have gone to and give me money, give me baskets for raffles, they do contribute. And there was a comment that when Gina mentioned something about maybe the board could take over and if you need volunteers, we'll put out, you know, some feelers. And I heard the comment from a. And I heard the comment from a trustee that, yeah, you made that threat before. I personally don't think of it as a threat. I think it should be done. We'll be happy to help. But it's just a small group of people, and we just can't do it without more money. Thank you.
We have three on Zoom, I think. Lisa, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Um, so Lisa Spidey, one oh six Prospect Street. Um, I think everybody's kind of, you know, said what they've had to say. I, it's, it's late. Um, I'm hoping my question is not controversial. It's, it's pretty simple and basic. And I've, I've noticed, my mother has noticed, um, because it's, the weather's getting warmer and we've been outside. Um, very basic. What happened to the fire whistle at noon and six o'clock? It, it's gone. It's non-existent. And I'm just curious of, of what happened to that and why, and, and what, what, will it ever be back?
I believe so. They, they were having persistent issues with it, and it was triggering at the wrong time, working too long. And so I believe that there's still hope to get it working correctly. It's noon and six, but uh, it is out for repair. I just got a note from this sideline that it is out for repair. Next up on Zoom.
Uh, this person, this has initials in there, so I'm not sure who it is.
Low initials.
T A C L.
Go ahead.
No, this is actually Mary Price Bush, one oh five McLean Street. And I was at the meeting. I'm sorry, I get up too early to stay. Um, I just want to say for the, the events committee, um, and specifically the Family Fun Day, it's labeled as a village event, and it costs about thirty-five thousand dollars. The village wants to give eight thousand, eighty-five hundred dollars. That leads, leaves us to hit up the same businesses time and time again for the balance of that. And I think with the frustration with the, the committee, the volunteers, is that we realize the businesses don't have this money. And since it is labeled a village event, we are hoping that the village could maybe step up and actually contribute a little bit more to make it actually a village event. Thank you.
Anybody else inside the room? Chris?
Chris Buke, Six Keely Drive. Pretty much echoed what everybody said up here. Uh, well, I'll go whatever I said here, but I, I'd like to remind you, it wasn't too long ago that all our kids were sitting in school, seven hours a day, if not longer, fully masked. Fully masked, all day, well, every day. I don't know about you, but that's miserable. That's a miserable experience. And I do know when you have events where people come out, students can go be part of that village, such as Family Fun Day. When they have events like the birdhouses, that they can participate, feel proud that they see that birdhouse hanging up. And you say you support it, but you forget I've been to every meeting, and it's like a congressional hearing. You nickel and dime this poor man here about every cent he gets. Six thousand dollars, it seems a little bit expensive for birdhouses, every single time. So you don't support it. I agree, you should put a little bit more money into it. I know things are fiscally challenging. I used to work for the PTA up at the middle schools. Or not the middle school, the elementary school. I'm doing it at the middle school too. We would put together a painting night for the kids. There are a lot of low-income families in this village and outside of this village, just people that come from outside of this village to come to those events. Because that's all their family can afford. Doesn't cost them anything. Except the price of gas you get here, and most walk. That's why I joined the Friends of Whistwall, so we can clean that park up, make it a great event. First Fridays are always a great time for my family to go down. There was snow cones and popcorn and free movies. And just, come on, the snickering, laughing. I hear more attacks on the mayor, and I just see some of your body language up here. It's insulting. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for showing up at the school and trying to pitch something that can be done about the safety that we just had that accident, unfortunately. And it wasn't the first time, and unfortunately, it may not be the last time. I would like to see more of you at the school board meeting. You've got a member from your school board sitting here, and he does the job relentlessly every year for not a dime, not a penny. What do you think this role model's for him? Now, go back to the point, he's probably be thankful when he goes back to his meetings. It's the other last two hours. But you blame the public. You caught our second public comment out. You reduced us from a total of six minutes down to five minutes. Well, you did us a real favor. We get out of here real early, don't we? That seemed to solve the problem. It didn't. This is the problem. It's bickering back and forth. It can be done in email, it can be done in phone call. I don't know how many times I gotta get up here and continue to try to hold each and every one of you accountable. You blame us. But you don't look at yourself. A lot of pointing fingers at the mayor. You don't point fingers at yourselves, right? What can you do better? I'll criticize the mayor. He needs criticism. Absolutely. I know, we went all over him when I thought the county seat was moving out of the village. We stayed on top of him. I believe in holding my elected officials accountable. Unfortunately, there's not a lot that gets done up here. We're just bickering back and forth. And you get upset when people see something in the crowd. Well, if you gave them three minutes at the end to blow off a little steam and get up here and express their views, and say, oh, no, 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 we'll talk. We'll get our time to comment. And we can't say anything? This village is a treasure. I paid quite a bit for my home to move here, to stay here. And I haven't regretted that for one instance, because great courage to raise four children. There's new restaurants popping up all the time. Stuck with Big's amazing. I'm still a fan of Real McCoy. I'll support local businesses anytime. Ribbon Cafe. Have three great wonderful chowders for Chowder Fest. We're now seeing more places do Chowder Fest right here. They have the Chocolate Fest. There's so many great reasons to want to be in the village and to continue to be in the village. And when I moved in, there were plenty of empty lots still over and killing. Now they're all full. You know what kind of tax revenue that brings in? And you ask those people, why'd you move here? It's a great place to have kids, to raise kids. There's great events to bring them to. There's great businesses, and there's more coming all the time. And I tell you, this drives you nuts every single time you want to put together these little advisory committees, but we have to send in in a letter of intent, in our resume, and five, six, seven references. Of course, I'm exaggerating here, but it does seem like utter nonsense. I should be able to just say, listen, I'd like to volunteer. What do you do? What do you need? What can I contribute? I don't know a single thing about this. Maybe I have some sort of input. But no, no, we got limited to ten people. We gotta go through this whole process to select them. That's not how you encourage volunteerism. That's how you restrict it, very frankly. You just drive people away. I want to get interested in the Park and Tree Board, and it should have just been, hey, come on, you know, let's know you like to be interested. I submit a letter of intent, why I'm interested. I like trees. I guess, I mean, come on.
Twenty seconds, and I am the first to the point. So if you're, have an interest, send just me an email. For goodness sake, go ahead. We need people.
And just like I said the last meeting, with Woods Hole, I know there was some debate on that. We didn't want to listen to surplus. We need this money so bad. What was the whole of there? Listen to surplus, get the process moving. There's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, or whatever, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And again, I know part of that money was possibly earmarked for Whistwall, and what we could do there to bring that back into our community for events right here in the village. I love Woods Hole. Spent many times hiking up there. But again, Whistwall, we could really use that money. So again, I just consider, you know, get some things done. Please move forward on this. A little less bickering. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody else in the house? Seeing none, and I believe Foreman already went, so it is time for board comments questions.
All right. But I don't like this. I just want to say that whatever that description of the fire contract was, was completely fictional from A to Z. But that's neither here nor there. But it is interesting that he would fabricate something like that, because it's so inconsequential. But um, the big, the big issue is, and we don't have to be calling each other a lot of names here, but one thing that is just a truth in politics is, when you're in politics, you're gonna have to work with people who you disagree with. And that's just the reality. And you have a choice to make. No one can force you to leave your position. When Frank was elected, we all could have resigned, apparently, and that would have been justifiable according to the law. But we chose not to. And Frank's not quitting, even though we give him a hard time. He's choosing not to. It's a choice. You don't have to leave. Uh, Trump didn't quit when he was impeached twice. Barack Obama didn't quit when Bishop Kyle denied him a Supreme Court justice. Uh, you don't have to quit just because you're in a, a government system with people you disagree with. And uh, it's unfortunate he made that choice, but it's not our responsibility. It's a choice he made. He needs to take responsibility for that choice.
Anybody else?
And I do want to, again, reiterate, because there's a narrative that we don't appreciate. I appreciate everything you do for the village, Mark, and I appreciate the um, time you put in and the other volunteers, and I want to support that. And um, we will increase the budget from last year's budget for both birdhouses and family fun day. It's a matter of how, it probably won't be as much as you're asking for. You did it last year, so.
That's not an excuse. Sorry.
Well, we'll, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to provide what we think is, is appropriate and doable, and then hopefully you will, you will. Okay. All right. So we all, we all make decisions.
I will take the birdhouse program outside the village.
All right. You'll be, yeah, we'll be responsible for the budget, and you're responsible for whatever you want to do.
Would I do it? Exactly.
Right. Unless, you know, you want to petition the residents to raise taxes, and that we could, we can, we can have the money to do whatever. You know, it, it really comes down to there are limits, and we have a whole list of things that
You want to raise. That's, you want to raise, and you want to have the, the, uh, the, the newsletter come back in your lodging.
Yeah, we want the newsletter to inform people about what's going on. Yeah, that's a choice, and we feel that's, that benefits a lot of people. And then something that people have asked for, and they like, they, yeah, they gave us a lot of positive feedback on that, that newsletter. Hey, it's great to see what's going on in town. You know, we have all these different needs, and when people have their wish lists, we usually don't fulfill it, because we can't, unless we raise taxes. So we're, we're in this box.
Right. That, that, that's your choice.
No, it's not our choice. It's our job.
And that's your job.
Actually, was your choice, because there was a balanced budget that actually embraced all that stuff.
As Mary Price Bush said, the budget for Family Fun Day is not sixteen thousand dollars. We were gonna raise the money. We can't raise that much more. Okay, if you cut it down to eight, or whatever you're gonna give us, ten, we can't raise that extra amount of money. So it's, you know, you do it. Liz, you can take it on. It's easy. Sean will.
The, it, it's undoubtedly a ton of work. We know that.
You do it. You should do it.
We and ten thousand dollars should be enough, or a day of, of celebration. It may not be completely your vision of everything, but you can do some significant work for ten thousand.
Research about what it would cost. You guys talk about doing analysis. Come up with an analysis of what it should cost, based on some facts, and then we can talk about it. And then do it. It's now two and a half months away. Right?
And Mark, I don't mean to cut you off, but public comment. So, board comments, you stay quiet.
Okay.
Unless you specifically ask.
Mark, please.
Those are the rules of procedure.
Mark, please speak. Mark, go ahead and respond.
So you, thank you, uh, Mayor, that the mayor has asked me to respond. You know, you're telling me what it should cost. Well, yet you back it up with no information. I'm telling you, from my expertise, being in the industry for thirty years, in the entertainment industry for thirty years, what it should cost. Okay? You don't want to do it. If you don't want to take my advice, then you come up with a budget, and you guys handle it. As, as they said, even just the bouncy houses for, without cutting out the morning session, was gonna be uh, fifty-eight hundred dollars.
And how many bouncy houses? And so, at the number of bouncy houses, it won't disturb the
Eight of them is only, it's only like a six hundred dollar.
All right, we've heard Mark's opinion, and it is valid, and he's heard ours, and let's keep moving forward.
I will step away.
But this, this actually gets to, in this mic comment, this gets to the nuts and bolts of our problem here. And it's not even a question, Chris, of us not listening to each other. It's actually us not listening to the people that know better than us. That's the problem. We have an accountant that basically flat out said, you can't do what you're trying to do with respect to certain budget commitments. An accountant that actually took me to task on certain things I was doing with tentative. And he gave me high marks in the end for the simple reason of I accomplished what we needed to do. There was a point where he thought we had to pull about four hundred thousand dollars out of fund balance. And I went to run trim and found revenue and worked to make sure that we didn't have that situation. Last year, for instance, we had sixty thousand dollars taken out of fund balance. And I trimmed that down to nine on the tentative budget without going to tax cap. And instead of saying, wow, great, thank you, and our accountant actually did give me at least a wow, we just kind of ignore the fact that for the last five days, he's saying, you can't do these things. You cannot do them. You have to balance your budget. You have to do it with accounts that exist, et cetera. Our attorney has given us plenty of advice along the way. We just absolutely scorcher advice. Alex probably gets an earful every time it happens. And it's not fair. It's not right. And it's a costly, it's funny at the end. When it comes to Family Fun Day, we really aren't listening to the person or birdhouses that knows what this is, knows what the costs are, knows what we're facing all the time. And we just don't listen. It's not, again, it's not listening to each other. It's listening to the people that do know better at the end of the day. And that's what's just getting us absolutely hamstrung. Don Rhodes almost quit on us as our water feasibility guy. Sorry, Sean, it was some of your stuff that almost did it to us. And this is a guy that is renowned in the industry. Carlos worked with him multiple times. And this guy almost said, screw Boston Spa, I'm out of here. I salvaged that relationship because I've known Don for long enough. But I mean, we can't just keep going to that level. EFPR today, the accountant said, they're gonna charge us hourly now because of everything that's going on with the accountants, with the treasurer situation. That's another thing to us. Again, because we weren't listening. And Barbara basically admitted today, the reason she went and looked for those jobs is flat out because we didn't make it a permanent deputy treasurer, even part-time. She continued to look. She found a job in the end. Congratulations to her. She's gonna do great, I'm sure.
Those weren't the only reasons. She didn't get the support and the training, and that falls under your supervision.
Boy, I remember an email directly from her today, Liz, that said flat out what happened, and it was exactly what I just explained. So enough.
Anyways, um, again, just as other people have observed, you immediately go to blaming. Blame, 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 instead of dealing with the issue and trying to reach compromise. Compromise is not in your vocabulary.
Liz, I asked you Thursday, I asked you Friday for responses. I asked you on Facebook on Saturday.
Because I was waiting to talk to the office of the comptroller, because I had no access, as you did, to an accounting firm.
Didn't require an accounting firm to actually balance a plus with a minus.
I balanced the plus with the minus, and now I hear that I can't use Fund F. If you look at what I handed out, it balances.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does. The math adds up.
No, you're eight thousand dollars off. No, you're eight thousand dollars off, and you're not showing your fund balance correctly. That was the other thing, I wrote you an email.
Well, because I had to estimate the fund balance, thank you, because I asked what it was and I didn't get an answer.
Rich, go ahead for a second. You can do it. Go ahead.
Now, we should be moving on to motions.
You know, Rich has been sitting there, and he's not a frequent visitor.
We is eleven-ten, and we have not gotten through motions. I would like for once in your life, Mr. Mayor, to follow the agenda. Follow the agenda. It's your job to follow the agenda.
My name is Rich Corman. I live at one twenty-five Fairborough Avenue. I've been kind of listening to this, and it's amazing that you guys have another budget workshop coming up. And I hear people arguing about, or discussing, not arguing. I like to think that we're a little more mature than we are back sometimes. But you do have another budget workshop, and rather than the bickering back and forth over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and stuff, I think that can be worked out amongst the board at the workshop. I don't think you have to do that here at a public meeting because it's not gonna happen. It's just not gonna happen. You guys are elected officials. You represent the people at a village of Boston Spa. You have been charged with doing the best of your abilities for the benefit of the citizens of Boston Spa. Okay, and that's working on a budget, that's getting along, that's give and take. Agree or disagree, okay? But working out some type of settlement between the warring parties, okay? One thing that I notice here is there's too many personalities going in here. This is just a personality war, and it is not running a government, it is not running your village. It is not running for the benefit of the people, okay? It's a backstabbing. Alright, and, you know, I, I don't know how third graders act anymore. It's been a long time since I've been in third grade, but I think this has kind of given me an idea. Come on, you guys, you mature adults. You have a responsibility here to the people, okay? Put your big people pants on and do what you gotta do in order to get it done. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Can I get a motion that the attached budget transfers be approved? Trusty Fandesa? Trusty Coros discussion. All favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that the Friends of the Boston Spa Library be authorized to submit for a grant for the amount of fifty thousand dollars to the J M McDonald Foundation? Trusty Raymond, trustee Fandesa, discussion. All favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to the Boston Spa Post number three fifty-eight and the Henry Cornell American Legion Post number two thirty-four? Be permitted to conduct the annual Memorial Day Parade on May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, beginning at nine AM. I'll buy a picnic-type reception in Whisewell Park. Trusty Fandesa? Trusty Coros, discussion. All favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Can I get a motion approving this attached LaBella Associates DPC scope of work in cost of six thousand two hundred fifty dollars for the Church Avenue crosswalk, authorizing the mayor to execute the related agreement? Trusty Raymond?
I'll second.
I get the trustee Baskin discussion. All favor? Oppose? Motion carries. Can I get a motion that tentative budget, I will skip that one apparently. Can I get a motion? Technically, I gotta skip this one, Liz, unless.
Mr. Mayor, just like the sixty-two fifty, that's coming from which account for that motion, V?
We, we had that, uh, budget.
We had it, but, alright, it hasn't disappeared.
No.
Are we supposed to table motion if I made it?
Well, no, we've made the motion technically. It's just appearing on a sheet of paper right now. You actually have to make the motion, but.
I'd like to table item, uh, cap, for after the discussion of the budget at the next workshop. And I will also table.
G.
G, in order to discuss with the accountant the best way to handle that.
And, and attorney, because she's gonna be able to help out with that, so.
Yeah. I think if we form a repair reserve, that is a simple type of reserve to create, and it does not require. For this referendum, so that's probably the direction we're gonna go on that one.
I think any reserve is gonna require something, but we'll figure it out. H is motion that the Revenue Advisory Committee be reestablished under the Board's committee policy and consist of five members charged with reviewing water and sewer rates and revenues and any other revenue sources directed by the Board, will make recommendations to the Board.
I'll make that motion.
Trust second. Trustee Baskin, discussion. You don't reestablish an existing committee?
It hasn't been in operation for two years?
It was never, it's, it's mission.
It hasn't functioned in two years.
I have to say that the Revenue Advisory Committee be established under the Board's committee policy.
But the Revenue Advisory Committee is established, so make a motion. Well, that's, that's a whole different wording then.
So we will make a motion to dissolve the existing committee and then reestablish a new committee.
Two separate motions, but okay, now we've got chaos here, so how do you want to handle it?
Let's pass a motion to.
We couldn't just pass what's here.
The existing revenue committee, which has not met for three years.
Can we ask our lawyer, if the committee has not met for three years, is it effectively dissolved, or does it always exist forever?
I'm probably gonna check here. I don't know. I, I think if you wanted to cover the basis, you could. There's all going to be established.
May I make a suggestion, give them a late hour? Is it possible to just change this motion to dissolve with another motion maybe the next meeting to establish?
Why not do it? Alright, I'll make a motion to dissolve the current.
Now, there's a motion on the floor. Unfortunately, somebody made a motion.
Okay, so I make a motion, then.
We'll vote on this motion.
Okay.
I guess.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No. This committee to reestablish, or did we decide that this wasn't?
That's the whole point. I think we should just wait until next meeting, so you guys.
There, there were not three ayes, so the motion actually fails. Me, Sean, and Liz, did Liz, no, she did not say anything.
I can say aye.
Yes, the vote was conducted.
And that, now we will modify it. We're not ready for it. Can we please cable us? What we have to do is, you guys don't have the wording figured out.
Alright, so we're gonna, alright, we, we passed that motion. We're gonna assume that this is valid.
No, you did not. That motion failed.
No, it didn't. We all voted three of us.
You did not vote.
Yes, I did.
I said all favor. I heard two voices. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong out there. And I had one. It's two to one with the mayor not needing to vote in this situation.
This motion did not pass.
Correct.
I propose a motion that the existing Revenue Advisory Committee be dissolved.
Alright, I'll second that. That's what we have to do.
So you will not be chairperson any longer, just so you know.
That's fine.
Okay, just so you know, because this seemed to be a big hangup for you.
I don't have a power, so, you know. I want to get work done.
Sorry. All favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose?
So now we're gonna do another motion, Curtis. Another motion to reestablish?
Yep.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to establish, under the Board's, the Board's committee policy, a Revenue Advisory Committee consisting of five members.
Why five?
Charged with reviewing water.
Before you make a motion, before you make a motion, I'm trying to save you from the event. Take, take a breath for a second.
You want seven?
I think it's an important enough committee. This is like hundreds of thousands of dollars of revenue we're talking about in this one.
I'm alright with seven. Well, we have a committee policy.
Okay.
Okay, seven members charged with reviewing water and sewer rates and revenues and any other revenue sources directed by the Board, will make recommendations to the Board. So I made a motion, so I'll second.
I'll second.
While we do my job.
Moving along.
Discussion.
We're gonna do seven.
Alright, well, let's, we have to vote, Liz.
Okay.
Vote was discussion. She asked a question.
To establish.
A little punchy. Notice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain, and so three to one with one abstention, doesn't matter, this is, most curious.
And then we'll look at the committee interest forms and make it according to the committee policy at the next meeting. And then we can actually get to work.
I will announce that in the meantime, there will be a mayor's advisory group on water, so we thank you. If anybody wants to join that, you're more than welcome to sign in.
And what's the purpose if we're having a regular committee to look at water? Or is this a different purpose?
It's gonna be a similar purpose, but I might actually look at a broader question too about infrastructure questions on the line. It's clear that we have no.
It makes sense to me to not have overlapping purposes, and it's fine to have a committee that looks at infrastructure planning or something, but there should only be one set of people looking at revenue for efficiency and coordination.
Yeah.
Thank you. I get a motion that the rezoning committee be established under the Board's committee policy to consist of ten members to develop an RFP for consult work with the committee to review current zoning and to recommend to the Board a new zoning code consistent with the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan. I'm slowed down there. What you said was a misprint.
The misprint was, uh, the rezoning committee was established in the Board's committee policy, consists of ten members to develop an RFP to consult and.
And to work.
And to work with the rezoning committee.
They get a motion that the rezoning committee be established under the Board's committee policy to consist of ten members, develop an RFP for consultant and to work with the committee to review current zoning and recommended, and recommend to the Board a new zoning code consistent with the twenty twenty-three comprehensive plan.
And make that motion.
Trusty Coros?
I'll second.
Trustee Baskin, do we need a vote? Three people already requested it.
Well, the new, the new, it doesn't matter if you request it.
Well, just for, for, for the record, Terry, this is part of our discussion. Our attorney recommended that we don't pursue this. I think we're just jumping the gun a little bit, and I just want that on the record from my perspective at least.
Yeah, are you gonna get a law firm, or are you gonna get a development company? What are you going to utilize in the first place? I'm curious.
We don't need to know that yet. We're just making the committee.
Who's getting the committee and then the committee is gonna look at, okay? It's down the line. It's just to get the ball rolling.
In other words, we're not going to listen to the people that know better. We're going to, I got it.
We're the elected officials.
It doesn't mean we know everything.
No, we don't, but we listen to our advisors, but we don't necessarily do everything they tell us because sometimes they're not the people who are elected, you know?
Rich, I, I heard that.
I apologize.
It's okay. I need to laugh myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
No. Roll call would reflect that, uh, Fandesa and Ross were no's, remained were ayes. Uh, motion carries. I can get a motion to approve the payment of twenty-seven thousand seventy dollars to Lowell Street Pump Station Turbine Replacement Project, Roselle East Incorporated. That's, I'll go to Fandesa first and Sean for the second. Is that okay?
Where's your name?
Discussion.
Is this in the budget or where is this coming from?
This is further Lowell Street situations related to the ARPA scenario from back when.
So this is.
That is ARPA money?
Yes.
Do we have an accounting in our?
We do not because it's so messy, and I'm still trying to track down what you did and didn't intend for ARPA. This is gonna be an audit nightmare for us.
Well, I think we should be able, just by listening to the committee, you know, to the recordings, tell when we said ARPA.
Well, usually with your minutes and see if I read the agenda, see if I can tell from that, but, I mean, it's, the other problem is also what we are, are paying, LaBurg, which was another ARPA scenario. So I gotta get catching up on that too, but the answer was around three hundred thousand, Liz, give or take. And the assumption was that we're going to use about a hundred thousand for the well generator for four A and four B out of ARPA funds, which, again, I don't know why we're removing funds if we knew that in the first place perhaps. So that's one last thing to think about, okay? Just keep that in mind for next week.
The thing is, if we know we have an intention to spend money, then we should set the reserve. That should be policy, and I think we need a fund balance policy as well, so we'll look into that, so next time, other time after.
All favor? Oppose? Motion carries. I get a motion to approve payment of three thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars fifty-eight cents of Vander Mollifier Apparatus Sales and Service for brush truck repairs for Umat Lee Fire Company Number One. Trusty Fandesa? Trusty Coros, discussion. All favor? Oppose? Motion carries. I get a motion. Uh, this is other business. Can I get a motion approving?
You're reading, I have it in front of me.
No, I'm, I'm actually doing the, uh, slick.
Rather than doing what's, oh.
Yeah, let me, let me do slick for a second because I was grabbing at it. I get a motion, uh, approving the, uh, the mayor to execute an agreement with Slick Networks for a lay-down yard at the Multi-Avenue Stump Dump Site of no more than one acre toward the front left area of the, uh, site, uh, for five hundred dollars per month. Uh, the, the agreement will not be executed unless and until, uh, the village attorney approves such an agreement. Trusty Fandesa? Trusty Raymond, discussion? Sure, but we do have to get it done soon because I've got some stuff. And Alex, how are you with lease agreements?
Actually, probably better than selling or town board meetings.
Frank, you're hired. Yes.
I emailed you earlier in the day. Are, are there gonna be any impacts, and are they gonna mitigate any impacts associated with?
That's, that was part of the, yes, that's the assumption on that.
Okay. That should be, yeah, and the, the related point I was making is that, what you can call it decommissioning, or, or just make sure everything's off that property when, whenever they're.
Replacing one's divots, I think they call it, fresh from the masters. Uh, all favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Uh, go ahead, then, on your.
Motion made by, seconded by, to approve the final memorandum of intent that includes a term of sale for Woods Hollins and Tana Milton. Approval of this memorandum of intent does not include approval of the final contract, which must be reviewed and approved by the village board separately prior execution. So I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin, trustee Coros, discussion?
We've got this agreement. I think we should approve it and, uh, you know, have the attorneys move on to drafting the contract and draft in conservation.
I'll give, I'll give further clarification as I've got it tucked away, I'll try a little as well, this is with Carlos, uh, Richen, to just clarify the seventy-two H exception that he pointed out in municipal law, and whether or not it is or is not required for surplus declaration before this MOI, which is an official board action, to actually make a move forward on the sale. That's my concern. I'll be talking to Wade. to actually make a move forward on the sale. That's my concern. I'll be talking to Wade to make sure before I do execute it as mayor. That said, did your motion include permission for execution by the mayor or not?
No, it's going to be, I put in there that this number, that this motion does not include approval of the final contract, which must be reviewed and approved by the village board separately prior to execution. So I'll send it to.
But who's executing the MOI?
Executing it? Well, you can sign it.
Well, you should put that in. Yeah, that's, that's needed.
All right, so, so motions made to approve the final memorandum of intent that includes a term sale for Wood's Hollis Towne Milton. And to approve execution of MOI by the mayor. That work? And then continuing what was there before, approval of this memorandum of intent does not include approval of the final contract, which must be reviewed and approved by the village board separately prior to execution.
Finally. Okay, so you, who made the motion? Ben was saying that Liz, Ben, you accept, obviously Liz, you accept that change.
Yes.
So the, the change is what? You're just giving you permission to sign the MO, MOI?
Yes.
Just for public, uh, public comment, just for common section. I do plan on voting on, for voting up on this. However, again, I just feel like we're doing this a little out of order. In my opinion, we shouldn't have declared surplus. But I just want that on the record over our minutes. I don't want to labor the brain, but just want that on the record.
I'll, I'll just add, you know, for two weeks I've been asking, do we need a declare surplus and what's the reason for that? And didn't get a reason. And now it, it looks like we don't need to do that. And so I'm glad we're able, we're agreeing to do this at this point in time. I want to thank everyone who worked on this to get us to this point. And I think it's to the benefit of the village, give us significant funds to help with our parks inside the village.
Roll call.
Trustee Baskin?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Montegato? Yes. Trustee Cormos?
Yes.
Mayor St. James?
Uh, Mayor of St. James.
The, the last motion I have, which maybe doesn't have to be a motion, and we can all agree, I think it would be important to publicize these final terms, which are similar to ones people have heard, but just publicize the final terms on the official website and Facebook page. Do we get a motion to do that or can we all agree to have that done?
Jennifer?
Yeah.
All right, so you'll just put it on?
I agree.
Well, sometimes I ask all the mayor's office. All right, so officially, we all are okay with publicizing this on the official website, Facebook page. I know there was a request for hard copies at the village offices in case people don't have Facebook. And I'd say go ahead and email the, the village with the email list as well with what this is. It's a big deal, I think.
I think the public should see the terms and have a chance to comment if they have thought.
Right. So people should understand this memorandum of intent. We intend to move forward with it, but it is non-binding. It just basically indicates that we all agree to the same terms. So if some, we don't anticipate a lot of pushback from the public or, you know, objections. But that's, it's not, it's not a done deal at this point. So your feedback is still relevant.
Final motion, I get a motion approving the contract for one year of Chief Dave Bush, David Bush, as police chief at a annual salary of $34,900 and other benefits as listed in the agreement. And permitting the mayor to execute the agreement.
Yes.
Trustee Fundanta.
I'll second.
Trustee Baskin, discussion.
That's the same salary.
They emailed it earlier. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
People should know that there's no salary. Please say.
I'm going to bite my tongue. I want to just say all in favor. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any other business? Executive session is needed briefly, recently, briefly. There may be action taken. Later, later, like Richard. I get a motion going to executive session.
I suppose if I must.
Trustee Baskin. Yes. Uh, trustee Raymond.
I'm sorry, it's been two weeks.
Are you, is your camera on or not?
I have one camera. That's all I have.
That one, got it.
But not yours.
Okay, whatever. Okay, the action we will take is to set, I get a motion to set up a public hearing for the to, to amend the Boston, Village Boston Spa Code related to officers and, boy, hold on folks, I should have done this ahead of time.
What time is it? Bring a note down.
Yeah. Alex, good to see you. One second. We'll get this right.
I do have it somewhere.
Uh, amending section 45 dash one of the Village of Boston Spa Code qualifications for holding office to change the county where an officer must reside. Trustee Fundesa. Seconded by Trustee Cormos. I'm going to ask you to amend your motion for 7:01 PM on Monday, April 24th. And accept. Discussion.
No, Liz, we're not very able to.
I mean, it's a simple public hearing. People aren't going to. Okay, that's what I'm asking about the motion, right?
Yeah, also remember Carl, I need to check one thing on it too, to get the final, final version of it, make sure. So we'll, we'll drop this for now and assume that we're okay. If we have to reestablish it, we can do it at the, at the workshop for some reason. All favor. Opposed. Motion carries. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Hold on. Motion that the vouchers be audited in a meeting adjourned at 1:53 PM.
We don't need a motion.
I'll make that motion. What's up?
You don't need a motion about the salary?
No, no, no.
Yes.
Because it's not specific too. Uh, all favor.
I.
All favor. I'll post. Motion carries. Can I post?
Sean, then could you please sign this?
When, when do we need to make a motion about salaries?
When we actually hire a person. So I was going for guidance here or anything else. She just seemed not to be able to answer this question by email.
But, um, I mean, you wouldn't offer them 100,000. What if you quit? What if you did?
No, I'm looking for guidance. Obviously it has to be ratified. So I just, I needed to know what my crammer brand was supposed to be.
Thank you, Sean.
Earn their rights.
It's not so big, but it's.
Carl, what would you want?
Hard liquor after all.
See, you told me it kind of drugged, which sounds like.
This is new records?